The meeting of the whole Board of Education for Monday, January 25th, 2016. Mrs. Carino, will you give a roll call, please?
Okay, Simmons?
Here.
Odom?
Odom? She says here.
Carol?
Here.
Marx?
Present.
Horace?
Here.
Paraiso?
Here, in the corner, is present. First on the agenda, we have audience comments. And at this time, we don't have any audience comments. We'll move to the next item, which is a presentation from Flossmore Hills.
Mr. Craven, if you could come up and introduce your students and teachers. We greatly appreciate it. Parents, thanks for bringing your children out. I know they're excited, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Good evening, Dr. Buster Humble of the Board of Education. We're happy to have Mrs. Marty and Ms. Reese and some of our fourth grade students, who will be presenting on music and technology.
So, we are here tonight to talk about music and technology integration. So, music technology is any technology where you are playing back, recording, sharing, analyzing, editing, and producing music. Last year, the American music industry generated more than $15 billion. So, it's really no surprise that if you ask many of our students what their top two interests would be, they would say music and technology. Music technology is connected to both artistic and technological creativity. So, these students are here to share about this. With more and more careers in music and technology, more and more universities are actually having degrees in this and similar areas. So, what are we doing to foster these talents in our schools? So, Ms. Reese and I collaborated on this and took these fourth grade students through an introductory process to music technology production. And that's what they're going to share with you about. After introducing themselves this evening, these eight students from Flossmore Hills are going to share with you how they recorded, edited, analyzed, mixed, produced, and then shared their very own music.
Hi, my name is Marina Gallin, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Jake Vaughn-Radick, and I am in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Tati, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Sayyid Akin, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Jordan, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Victoria Palmer, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Matt Fleming, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Douglas Lawson, and I'm in fourth grade.
First, we decided on a song that was popular and really interested us. We worked on our own lyrics, took them to melody. The lyrics were rewritten with the finds about our school, Flossmore Hills.
We practiced on the lyrics of our song with the tempo of the couple minute. Now I'll show you how we record ourselves singing the song. Okay, ready, set, go.
We'll have a good school year. We don't break rules here. Make our teachers proud. We want Eagles. Quiet in the hall, always in a five-point line. Wherever we are, we will champion our. We're supposed to be the Eagles here at Flossmore Hills. We're supposed to be the Eagles here at Flossmore Hills. Break it down now.
After we record ourselves, we need to roll back and see our errors. We use technology to record ourselves singing or playing an instrument. You can get the quality and tone of your music better and refine your performance. When we listen to ourselves, we notice that we slow down and we need to match our tempo better.
Then we use the Adobe Audition software to bring our voices with the company. This music software also allows us to edit and enhance our final musical production. Software like this I use with production companies, musical artists, to create advertisements, make musical productions, and many other ways.
To do this, first, we upload our recording and match it with the accompaniment. Insert it with the accompaniment. Here's track one, here's track two. Then we were able to drag the length of the accompaniment and match it with the tempo of our music. We can also change the volume to make sure that our voice is heard.
After working so hard to produce music, we want to share it with others. We use social media as a positive outlet to share our work. Eighty-one percent of teens use some kind of social media. Social media is a huge part of our work and can be used as a great resource to share our talents and final products of hard work with friends and family.
As we continue to add our social media profiles, we get to form an online portfolio that can one day be used before to get into future musical or technology clubs, or even future educational projects, or even applications in high school or college.
Here's how we tweet with our teachers. First, you want to press the Tweet button in the upper right-hand corner. Want to put the description here, and want to put your media picture here. Don't forget to put hashtag #D161Masters and at Flossmore. Here's our final performance. Thank you for listening to our technology integration has supported our music curriculum and our ways to help us in our future education and career path.
Ladies and ladies and gentlemen, I am very, very proud of you. Excellent job. And you know that one of my favorite songs, "Original"? We would like you to come up. We'll start with Mr. Simmons. Shake his hand and go around the table on the inside, and we'll give you the certificate.
Thanks, Ms. Marty and Ms. Reese. That was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a PARP presentation by Dr. Graham.
Dr. Graham? Board of Education, Dr. Graham is here to give an overview of what he has analyzed with the PARP scores thus far. Please ask him questions regarding the scores, and we'll have a dialogue. He will be back again, recording out, as he learns more about the scores as well. So, with that being said, Dr. Graham?
This was remarkable. I enjoyed this fourth grade so much. For two reasons. One, my grandpa was in fourth grade, and he's at 220. And she has a singing lady coming up, and I'm going to sit her down.
We always have you follow a tough opener.
I'm sorry?
We always have you follow a tough opener.
Yeah, yeah. A whole bunch of wonderful kids is incomprehensible. You know, it's just, they're so delightful.
Yeah.
You can quit right there. I was looking forward to hearing what I had to say. That was probably better. This year was somewhat unusual for all of us. PARP, Conover, and Common Core was implemented in the state of Illinois. A lot of different things are going on now in terms of the number of paths, the area of paths, and things like that. And Amy Craig asked me, and said, "How can you look at it and say, 'What do you see so far?'" This is not our primary report by any stretch. But Amy looked at PARP and said, "Where are we with PARP? And where are we with ISAT?" So, how it works. Measurement is critical in a school district in terms of what is going on in student performance. Here's a reading overview of ISAT, No Child Left Behind, Common Core, PARP, what I define as other mysteries. Now, with ISAT, last year, we looked at reading, mathematics, and science in grades three through eight, and then in science, four and seven. PARP, for some reason, which are even on the baseline total, we have the same level of game test in reading and mathematics. No one clicked. ISAT, No Child Left Behind. PARP, Common Core. Everyone familiar with these terms? So, we're going to try to learn some more. Levels of performance. With ISAT, there are four levels. The top two levels were considered satisfactory by the state of Illinois. With respect to PARP, the top two levels, again, would consider satisfactory. If you have five, it changes the perspective. Scale scores range all over the place between ISAT scores and PARP, from one year to the next. One thing we've done traditionally is index things back so we can make things comparable from year to year, subject to subject. How does it work? Law scores are prepared by the students. They take them. They are converted to scale scores based on the interpretation of the overall state Board of Education on the difficulty of each question, and so will hands. And finally, CUP scores, which are the levels of performance, are established by the state Board of Education. What are we looking at? Assessing reading, math, science, writing, and another. This year, only reading and math. Last year, reading, math, and science. Who knows what's going to happen depending upon budget misrings next year? Performance, scale scores. Everything is converted to a scaled score. To support the point out, the scale scores from one year to the next are not comparable at all. And then there's the CUP scores, which establishes the state standards. To give you a perspective, 2014, meet and exceed where the categories exceed range from 12 to 25 percent. The meet range from 36 to 55 percent. Hardly a home change in comparison. PARP scores, level five, their top level range from 2 to 9 percent, and the level four range from 23 to 34 percent. Not a lot of consistency about what's going on. The only reason the State Board of Education, in their infinite wisdom, said that the first two categories, overall, which almost had 33 percent of students pass. That was the state standard. Anyone that passed on the top two categories met the state standard. Anybody have a problem with that? Big problem with that. How did Flossmore do? In the top two categories, you had 38 percent of your students. So, you're doing better than the state average. But does that give you a clue of how you're really doing? Let's take a look from year to year. 2014, 75 percent of the students in the state met the state standard. Only 33 percent this year. Had things changed that much from 2014 to 2015? One must be very skeptical of the state standards. State scores are not directly comparable for the type of assessment, subject matter, grade, year, much less between time perspective and the like. Are we really interested about testing the kids? Let's take a look at some of the things that have happened in recent past with respect to the state and what has been presented. 2012, not that long ago, 57 percent of the schools passed by the state standards. The next year, 6 percent of the schools passed. The following year, 1.2. And this year, less than 1 percent passed. Raising the bar doesn't affect actual improvement. Just because you've changed the scale doesn't mean that kids are doing better or worse. Absolute insanity. We have to normalize scores, allow for aggregation, and rank. The thing that makes a difference here is that we can rank every school and every district, every sector, every grade within the state. Let's take a look at Flossmore. For PARP, reading, 2015, in the top 44 percent. That's good. That's an improvement. We'll talk more about your improvement later. Mathematics, top 39 percent. Overall, the top 40 percent. And here you can see, in Amy's graph, this is when you started implementing your new curriculum and have had a steady growth and improvement, which I would anticipate to continue. You may dramatic strides with the inhibiting factors of the state measurement and the demographic you have in Flossmore 161. There will be more discussed about that the next time around. You're on the move. You're doing some marvelous things. That chart here, do you know how many districts look like this? Less than 1 percent. And that's what it's all about, is improvement. Looking at the state and their categories of meet exceed level four and five, R, ambiguous, non-comparable, and I can think some other words, which are much more severe. And I think what we see here is what you're doing is some really good stuff. Thanks a lot. I can't agree with fourth graders. How about a song and dance? How about a song and dance? Hardly. Any questions?
I actually have a question. What, you mentioned that the, it's not comparable from year to year. How does this data match up with what we see in our math test?
I don't know.
I'm asking because I seem to remember that there was a start of an upward trend in your last presentation, Fred, if I'm correct. Is there any, you know, I'm looking at math as something that we looked at as consistent along the way.
I think, I can't agree with you more. Math is wonderful, and Courtney has ordered me the math scores. I just have not gone over all the math scores she has ordered to me. You know, we just got this very, very late. It took a while to figure out what the heck they're trying to say and put it into a comparable fashion. The Metro Board will have comparisons with math.
Okay.
Math is great, and we'll be able to make a lot more conclusions on point. Excellent question, but I don't have the answer yet.
But we will. My other question, does anyone else have a question? My other question is related to, if we have, or if there's been any sort of study or examination, what is the impact of wealth in a district on proper implementation of PARP, considering that even our own district you're looking at, we're going to have to spend upwards of $30,000 for the equipment to even take the test? And I know for a lot of area districts that are not as wealthy as us, that was an issue that, you know, how they were going to manage that. It's a lot of the last-minute changes last year before the testing.
Can I rephrase the question?
Sure.
Was your neck of increased expenditure on student performance? Is that a question?
I suppose. I'm really looking at, I guess, and I remember I was sitting in a study in the University of Chicago, and with the superintendent from Will Matthews. We're going to start the next day, and they're all geared up. And I was thinking, okay, well, you know, glad you're fully equipped for this. At the same time, beware conversations with other districts where they're really concerned about, you know, these, the financial impact and really requirements they were going to face as they prepared to take this test, and how well they would be able to implement that in their district.
I don't have a way to answer this. I'm very familiar with 39 and 49. And the impact and the cost of implementation are a whole different issue with respect to student performance. And I don't have the answers today. This is a preliminary to give an idea of what PARP and ISAT have to compare. I hope to have more information on those particular issues if you outline the next time around. Flossmore has been wonderful, provided very homogeneous data between math, ISAT, PARP, and all that. In fact, this district has a very more depth that I can actually compare from one year to another than any other district that we're for. So, we're going to be able to make some really good conclusions, but I don't have the answers today. I may not have the answers tomorrow either, but I think we'll be pretty much on the right track by the end of the day. Thank you for the questions. I appreciate it.
Sure.
The other questions?
So, I will have questions, but I don't know what they are right now because, and thank you for your presentation.
I probably don't have the answers either.
But because we just got the presentation, I haven't had the chance to really dissect the data and look at it, but I do plan on having some questions that I will come back with.
Yeah, this is just a preliminary that comparing PARP and ISAT at a macro level. There's a lot that's going on when we look at the district as a whole and look at it on a micro standpoint on a school and a student base.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure when I come back with questions that I've taken time to thoroughly think about the right types of questions to ask.
And I have time to answer them.
But I do have one quick question, though. On the chart that you just showed where it showed growth, that one, and you highlighted that in PARP, growth was experienced in spite of the fact that we were introducing the curriculum and also demographic changes. Can you talk about, can you tell me what you meant about the demographic changes?
But one quick thing. Every district I have seen, one of the major things that I have seen throughout the state of Illinois, all the districts I've worked with, with exception of one, is the ever-increasing number of limited English proficiency. Every district, it has been going up higher and higher and higher. I don't have that data in front of me for 161 today, but I expect you're following the same path as many of the other districts. And most districts that have the higher proportion of limited English proficiency are not moving up, particularly in the area of reading. Reading is the most critical thing. And as you notice here, we do not talk about science. And the only reason we don't talk about science is the test wasn't given. Do you know the relationship between science and reading and mathematics? You do? What is it?
No, I'm shaking, saying yes, there is. Absolutely.
In my analysis, I'm certainly mathematical. I want to emphasize, I'm a mathematician. I'm not an educator, which means I look at a lot of numbers, make a lot of conclusions, and don't have any basis for it. Not quite mathematics. But I found that two-thirds of the science score is based on reading. One-third is based on mathematics, which is interesting. So, that's overall statewide. But we don't have science here. But what we do have is we can see reading kind of ticked down a little bit, which made a bit of a higher proportion of limited English proficiency. Until we go through all the data, I will not be able to make that conclusive evidence. But I share your concern.
Well, so I would be interested to hear, after you have gone through the data, other trends with respect to demographic. And how do you think that we have?
Just like we've done in the past, we've looked at demographics with respect to limited proficiency, IEP, mobility, income of parents, et cetera. There's a whole series of things that we've looked at in the past and we've looked at again.
And what's the timing? When do you think we're going to come back?
Let's not be next week. I would expect that by, let's see, this is, I would think by the end of February, we'll have that for you.
In the interim, should I present my questions to you?
Any question, yeah, give it to Amy, and she'll forward it to me, and I'll make sure I answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for following the lesson. Thank you. At least we know kind of where we're expected. This is kind of a dual question, I think, for you, and this is the kind of question we get, we'd ask when we get this type of presentation. It's linking that into, once we get this data, when you go through all the information, will we be presented with information about, okay, this is where we are, this is where we're going to kind of move the needle if there is need to ask that? Because, you know, you presented it in here, but you just said it was irrelevant, but it's hard to compare. There's some things on it that don't make sense, but it still is a statewide test, and it still is a measure for how we look at the performance of our students. So, what I'm asking for is not necessarily, it's not a question for you, but once you have the data in front of us, which we've gone through, that, yes, Amy Craig, I'm looking for, is that going to be coupled with information about this is where we are, whether there's weakness or there is a strength, and then your plans to move forward or kind of gotten to that? It's the same kind of question I've been asking every time we have these presentations because they're good information to have, but I feel like sometimes we leave with... Okay, and what? So, the and what? Is that going to be a combination of presentation with respect to?
Not for sure at this point. The school improvement plans, what we do, we sit down and we look at those, and our data retrieves all this information that Dr. Graham gives us, as well as other information that's taken in the classrooms. That's where we combine that information, we review it, and we start setting our goals and moving that needle to an upward direction.
Okay, so we're looking for this information sometime like the end of February, so...
And that's what I'm making the catch of comment to paraiso is that all the information I give is received in a very positive way in terms of what do we do with it, which, from a pragmatic standpoint, that's all I care about, is, okay, here it is, what do we do about it? Amy and Craig both take what I give them very, very seriously. They want to set up game plans and how to capitalize on the input and get to improve what's going on. And that goes back to curriculum and a whole bunch of other things. This is not a monolithic type of thing where we just throw in a bunch of information, and then sits there dead. There's a reaction to that is going on to it. But I think in the next presentation, you may want to address that question to Craig and to Amy about, okay, now we got all this stuff, what are you doing? And that is something we always strive for, and it's about the action plan that takes place. That's what it's all about. You've got to do pretty darn good.
That, I mean, that actually was my question, though. What would we see though, what's next? So, I love, what I'll do is just keep these questions coming up once we have the information. I'll ask that question again.
And I just want any specific question to my head, just like I said, to Amy, and I'll make sure that I answer them in the next presentation. I just want to give you things that you can use. That's all I care about, is to give you some useful tools that you can direct your efforts. And the efforts have to be designed and developed by Craig and by Amy, and you're being here at 161. It's very important to you.
It sounds like your question or comment was also about timing. Correct. I mean, so we get this information at a time when school improvement... I mean, so we get this information at a time when school improvement plans have already been done and approved, so I'm not quite sure what happens during the data retreats or how often we have these data retreats. But how do we now, after all of these school plans have been approved, how do we now go back and incorporate or tweak this data in February when we now lost a big chunk?
Right. We have a continuous improvement cycle that we use. There are pyramids that they have provided to the Board of Education as far as their NPSs, which correlates to academics and behavior to see what the kids are. So, we're looking at the Tier Three, the Tier Two, trying to move them down to a Tier One. We have progress monitoring that takes place, and they go through the Planned New Study Act at all the schools, if they need to adjust, they do that. This is some of the data that's given, our data that I brought to the Board in December, we've been discussing with all the staffs. From our principals, they've gone over that with them. That is one CARP of the information. We're still not a hundred percent sure what CARP means yet, as well as other districts in the state. So, we're taking a look at that information, we're taking a look at our MAP, we're finishing up our MAP test at this point. There's going to be a second reporting to my cabinet and myself, where we'll have discussions. And if there's things that interventions that need to take place, you know, the continuous improvement cycle, that takes place during those times. So, we have to get a little bit of time throughout the year. So, there's three of those that happen, those report outs to me. Every six weeks, there's some type of monitoring meeting, there's date regular data meetings in school that's being addressed at faculty meetings, there's constant review, there's instructional walkthroughs, we're looking for the different levels to be okay. So, it's a continuous process the whole year.
And so, intervention that's created for students or a particular student, February, March, you know, sometime in the second part, in the later part of the school year, does that then follow them to the next grade so that you can actually really mark the progress of the intervention? Since intervention, it could potentially be happening late in the school year.
That will follow them to the next set of data. So, we'll see if there's any types of improvements. And then that information, if they're still on the same interventions, if that's the case, that will follow them to the fall, and then they'll retest it again to see if there's improvements in that. Any other questions?
One last question. There's nothing in time that I have to send preliminary information to Amy that she's going back to me with a series of questions for more detail and perspective about that one now. I would show you, I want to get the information, you guys to see as possible, and I also know once and for one, it's more than a sponsor when I come around with my first round of presentations. I want you guys to succeed more than anyone, I've got these for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. I'm sure we're sure.
Are there any other questions? Was the data, everybody understand it?
Oh, we have a little more. We just had this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have Scope legislation update of Peg Agnos.
Thank you. Ms. Agnos, thank you for being here this evening. Board of Education, this is Peg Agnos, she is lobbyist for Scope, and needs that we attend every month, and she's going to give an update on the state of the state.
So, good evening. I'm very glad to be here. I am Peg Agnos. I am your legislative director. I have been with Scope, and I always forget it, it's five years or six years or seven years. I have been doing this for twenty-two years. I also work with the schools in DuPage County. But prior to that, in my past life, I sat and I was very chairs of hearsay. I was a school board member and not a sanction. And while I was a school board member, my passion was the legislative process. And so, I worked with the General Assembly as a volunteer for many, many years, and with our legislative person and lobbyist out in the North Region. So, I come to this because of my, my desire and the work that I did on behalf of my children and the children that went before then, and my continued desire to work on behalf of all the kids in the state of Illinois. I'll tell you a little bit about Scope, and then I'll tell you kind of what's not going on and what is going on. And I want to talk to you a little bit about how I really enjoyed hearing that conversation around the CARP piece, because I hear, way at the macro level, it was really nice to hear, listening to all of you today at the board level. And by the way, it was great to see the kids. There's nothing better than being on board and having the kids come in the forum, so it's, thank you for inviting me tonight, this is really cool. I enjoyed that. So, Scope was started, and I'm going to cheat sheet, because Chris did this for me so I could have a little fast. Scope was started back in nineteen eighty-seven, and it was actually founded very much like some of the other small lobby groups, by a group of superintendents and school board members. You all know that you also belong to statewide organizations, whether you're a school board member, business official, superintendent, principal, we have other statewide organizations. But back in the eighties, I think that organizations, or regions up here in the North in particular, felt that there were just some issues that were very important to us and needed to have that focus for the South suburban area. And so, back in nineteen eighty-seven, the organization was formed. We include elementary districts, high school districts, and special education cooperatives. We changed the name, it used to be the South Hook Organization for Public Education, it is now the South Cooperative Organization, because we also include school districts around World County. We serve over three hundred thousand kids, and Chris likes to say, Chris Loewen, is the administrative director, has been with Scopes and the SISI in section, and she likes to say that Scope reflects the diversity that we see across the state. We're governed by an executive committee. We meet monthly, I'm happy to say that Dr. Doster and I see each other quite frequently, and Dr. Doster's a very active member and obviously great advice on many of the issues that I have to face when I go down to Springfield. So, that's a little bit about the organization. And it's very well respected. I came to it because your legislative person was a retired superintendent, and I was already down there working on behalf of the folks in DuPage County, and he decided that as a retired superintendent, this was just way too much work. He said, you know, my wife is retired too, and I cannot believe how much work I have to do, and this is really not such a part-time job, this is really a full-time job. So, about five or six years ago, the Lend organization allowed me to also take on responsibility of the Scope organization, and I have to tell you, I'm thrilled to do it, and I have a kind of legal passion for this, so I enjoy doing it. So, I want to tell you just a little bit about what's going on and what we talked about today at the Scope meeting. It was quite a, quite a good discussion, but here's what's happening or maybe not happening in terms of the situation in the state. We know that this week, we're waiting to hear what the governor's going to say in terms of the state of the state. We're getting bits and pieces from the press, we're also, you know, we tend to talk amongst our colleagues and our peers, and wondering is that what it is that he will or will not say? Generally, we hear about the accomplishments the prior year and what is yet to be accomplished. So, I suppose there'll be a bit of a mix, and we'll wait to see, see what, what will be on the plate. I think that we are going to hear that there is some movement on pensions. What that movement is, is a little bit unclear right now. The governor did have a press conference and said that he was supporting Senator Calhoun's proposal. This was a proposal that appeared a few years back. It seems that there's a little bit of a disagreement exactly what that one, which is. So, yesterday, Senator Calhoun said, why don't I just draft the bill again, and once the bill is introduced and the legislative review, we'll take a look at it and see if we agree. And then, that would be somewhat of an awkward situation, I would suspect, for the speaker, because then we might have some movement with two of the leaders indicating that they have some agreement on one of the big pieces going forward in this next coming session. We don't have a budget, I don't believe it's likely that we will have agreement done with this new year sixteen budget. Some folks are saying we may have a two-year budget, others are saying we just may do what the feds have done in the past. And that's just going forward without any. There would be, you know, the courts will tell us what we can pay or not pay, the governor says he doesn't want to do that anymore, he doesn't want the courts to tell us what we can and cannot pay, our unpaid bills are growing. Today, the Senate, the Senate President said that he's not going to allow K-12 appropriations for fiscal year seventeen unless there's a new school funding formula. So, you know, that, that's kind of in the midst, but that's always been in the mix. Senate Bill One has been out there for a long time, Senator Menard said he was going to introduce it again, so we probably will see some form of Senate Bill One reintroduced if we ever get back into session in any session days. So, we're kind of watching that for you and see what happens. I don't know what's going to happen with the Chicago crisis, with CPS. They're very close to going out on strike. I don't know if that will happen. There are lots of bills that I think we're going to see introduced before the deadline, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, on different ways to try to get some money into that system to keep hundreds of thousands of children in Chicago in school, and we'll just have to wait and see. I am told that there could potentially be the two-year property tax freeze in Senator Calhoun's bill, maybe, we don't know. So, we might see a two-year property tax freeze. Lots of legislators like that, it's popular. Our contention is that we're under the tax cap anyhow, and with the CPI being as low as it is, if the tax cap legislation is really working, we really don't need a property tax freeze, but that seems to be a popular concept out there. So, we may see it ultimately in legislation. I worry about that, because then you have statutory language that says you have a property tax freeze, and I worry that it just might always be removed. So, I just kind of fight about that, and I hear about that all the time, it's not very comfortable for me. State Board of Education put out their fiscal year proposal, I don't think they like it very much. They're using special education dollars, one of our mandated categorical dollars, to bump up the foundation level. That I think is really bad policy. We have a lot of questions around this, so today at the Scope meeting, because, you know, the South Cooperative Group is really kind of all over the place in terms of whether we're winners or losers or not. And so, we had a very lengthy conversation today, we are not taking a position on it. And again, it's kind of early, we don't really have to, but we are going to ask a lot of questions around why they're taking this approach to beefing up the foundation level and making, asking for some statutory changes around that and around how we do some other things in statute. So, I did get the approval to work with some folks on asking some questions at the State Board meeting, and just kind of, you know, stirring the pot a little bit on your behalf. On assessments, the science assessment will be given. When I talked to the State Board folks, we didn't have to give it last year, because they said we got a super secret, you know, kind of a bye last year, and Illinois didn't have to get it, but we do have to give it this year. So, that will be another assessment that you will be providing. I'm just as troubled as you are about when the results came back for CARP. It's very difficult to understand how you incorporate them, how do you use them, how do your teachers use them? I think in, and I watch, I have a grandson in Chicago, this is my first grandson in school now, with all these crazy assessments. And so, I think that seeing how well your district is doing, and hearing about your own local assessments, and the continuous and ongoing reflections of the district, I think that's probably the best approach. It's, CARP is designed for us to be compared. And I do want to tell you that this is one of the things that I watch very closely for you, not only the CARP piece, but the kids' assessment. We have some issues around that. If you have an assessment already, why do we have to have some new assessments and new training and additional dollars being spent? We are currently working with the State Board and their advisory committee on that piece. They don't like some of the things that we've suggested, but I think we have managed to get them to change some of the requirements around the kids' assessment. And that's the kind of things that I would do, but I do it on this level. So, I guess I really need to get in and hear what's going on at the board level when you do get these kinds of reports, and to see how you are or aren't using it, because you just validated for me what I hear. It doesn't, the results don't come back anytime later. What are we supposed to do with them when we get them when we're already halfway through the semester? It's, there are both kinds of things when we have this assessment. We've got two more years on the contract, so we still have CARP. I think that the state superintendent is committed to it. He did make a statement at the meetings that we have, and I can't remember the legal term, I'm sure there's some lawyers in the road, but when you own questions, so when you own questions that are part of the CARP test right now, so if we're not CARP anymore, those tests would come out, so ultimately we could create another assessment that would be more valuable. And this is all part of the college to career to, you know, getting rid of the SAT ACT or substituting the SAT ACT and having an end-of-course assessment in the high school. So, we're really looking at, you know, I think the state would like very much to see something from, you know, prepay all the way through up to the end of the exam for high school. So, there's a lot going on, and then there's no money. There's no money. We have no idea what's going to happen next year. I think we were lucky that we got our K-12 budget signed this year. I don't think we're going to be so lucky next year, but I, and I don't know what that means either. But, but that's what I do on your behalf, I, we watch it, we fight for it, we testify, I come to your administrators when I need help, and in spite of the fact that they're not in a very busy year. Vision 2020, I'm on the Vision 2020 Advisory Committee as a Scope legislative director, so we are participating on Vision 2020. This happened in Springfield last week, meeting with all the other executives and directors of the organizations that are participating in Vision 2020. So, we're trying to work very collaboratively and try to keep a handle on what may or may not happen in this arena. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are issues that you are concerned about or might be wondering about.
I have a question, Ms. Agnos. We have on our agenda actually Vision 2020, the Board has information on that, we've not adopted the resolution to that yet. We will be having some discussion today. Can you just give a quick overview to the Board since you're...
Yeah, I can tell you what I know as of this year, because we were, we were not asked to be engaged in it last year. And so, this year, the four, the exec, the six organizations that make up the, whatever the group is it's called, reached out to all of the other organizations like Scope and asked for our participation. So, they structured it a bit differently, they formed some subcommittees. And the subcommittees are working on the issues relating to the four pillars. And so, the organizations work, and they, actually, the only, I think the only group that came up with, two of them came up with maybe some proposals that might potentially end up as legislative proposals going forward, but the others kind of refined the language around the four pillars. The job, the role of the advisory committee is to review the work of the four, the four working groups. It was good, it was a good conversation. I will tell you that the evidence-based model piece in particular seemed to be a bit problematic when it was first introduced. We, I opposed the bill on behalf of Scope, because I didn't believe that it was just a panel, and there were no researchers associated with that. That has changed. We have become a working member of that, of that piece, and Michelle, can I get, Michelle Madd, I think her name is, anyhow, she's a protege of Ellen Aden, and she was the one to develop the work done on the National Lewis Project. She is actually going to be working with her and reviewing the work that they're going to be on the evidence-based model. It's very expensive, and this is what we want ultimately, but there's also, our feeling is there's a reality piece that we have to continue with, keep our eyes focused on, we have been currently in the state. So, that was our concern initially, because Scope is not assigned on it, it's a supporting organization. Not that that matters, I mean, districts do what districts do, but we are not, because our districts are all over the place, they're not all supporting Vision 2020. So, we've been asked to participate, and so that's new this year. So, at least they've embraced all the other organizations, so...
Thank you. And Grace, with the, can I, this is... Can I, Mrs. Odom and I had seen a presentation a year ago at the fall South Cook Division meeting, and it was a few people that we knew. And you had mentioned that there had been some changes since last year.
Two.
To Vision 2020. And can you tell me, because I've done some research in terms of like, okay, well, you know, food in your neighboring area is also supporting or not supporting, you know, the 522 people that are signed on a resolution. Is there a theme for why they're not interested in participating, or does that kind of match their level of participation with IAS data?
Honestly, I don't know. It's not something that I follow, and I, I don't know. I don't know the individual boards' reasons for it. I know just speaking to a couple of members that did not. It was really kind of a funding piece in particular. They felt that that was kind of more global, and they really felt that that was great, but they really felt that it was not something that was global. And so they felt that the original plan, the original 2020 vision was just that, that there was no meat in the plan. So I would suggest to you that you go back and you look at it. And I don't know how much meat there is. We just thought, we just got kind of a cursory look at committed reports, which is why I can't give you a lot of information. I only know about the, and even the finance group of which, you know, we've participated a little bit on the evidence-based model, we're only giving bits and pieces. So I would really encourage you to kind of look at it to see if there's more meat attached to those principles.
Right. I think that there is. I mean, just even looking at the bullet points expanded, slight changes in language, and I think that it's kept in shift with changing philosophies in education as we go from like, you know, the 1959 Blue's exotopy model to, you know, their depth of knowledge.
I remember that a lot.
I threw it out once.
That's one. So you know what I was.
Well, but in any case, you know, in some of the, the language around, you know, what is a, you know, quality educator and the emphasis on really creating that pipeline for, for great leadership through our classroom teachers.
Right.
And I think that it certainly is, I think that it shifted more into more pragmatic common sense of what really goes on in the classroom as opposed to theoretical sketchings that, you know, a lot of very hardworking people got updated for and, you know, really started with this, but I think it has fleshed out tremendously in the last.
And I don't disagree. And the other piece that I think is really coming together too is around the new IAN, which is the kind of old piece, which, you know, now under ESSA, under the ESSA, the reauthorization language, a lot's going to happen at the federal level. And so we, I had a couple of, I had a lot of calls, not a couple of calls, but I had a lot of calls from some superintendents who had, had kind of, when they, they were new dress, sort of a little bit alarmed, thinking that we were all going to go in and maybe take changes to the evaluation process. It just, you know, some of the newspaper articles appear to be saying that. Well, it can happen, but it's not likely that major, major, major changes would happen. So what's going to happen over the next couple of months, and you will know because I will let you know, is that the State Board is going to be holding hearings. You know, there'll be a couple of hearings around the ESSA changes. They're doing it, you know, they're doing it at the federal level right now, and we have people at the federal level who can do that on our behalf, but they're going to be doing it right here in Illinois. And there, so there'll be a lot of that activity going on through the state organizations but locally as well, because we have a good working relationship with the federal legislators. So that's, that's an advantage too.
There's been some overviews of it coming out lately.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, some of our regional, our regional superintendents have had, they've tried, they've had sessions already, but there's really not much to talk about. But Melina Wright of the State Board of Education, she's the federal person, and so she's someone that we've worked with for, I've worked with her very long time, and she said, look, all they have is the, they only have the actual, you know, like the final, final, they still have the working piece. So once they get that, then they can get that back out to us, and then we can get it back out in some sort of format. So that's the kind of stuff that I can give you, and then we can all talk about that. So that's what we do at the scope meetings too. But today was a good meeting, a real back and forth around that specialist, which may be okay, but I'm not convinced it's okay, so we're going to have to stay part of it's okay.
Can you repeat what you mentioned about science assessments?
Yeah, the new science assessment, we didn't have to give it last year. We got a, got a buy somehow. They're going to give it this, it's going to have to be given.
Three times.
Yeah, three times, two times.
I think it's two.
Through elementary?
Well, there's two parts to it, right?
Right.
So the science assessment will take place. They're opening the window, people, they don't have specific dates as of yet, but our fifth grade will take it, our eighth grade will take it, and then at the high school, they have biology courses that are going to be taken.
Right.
Isn't there two parts to it though?
Yeah, I think. But the bottom line is that, here's the controversy now, not so at the elementary level, but at the high school level. Because we got the pass last year, every, all the seniors in high school have to take it, even if they're in AP Biology. And so when they open the window, it's at the same time kids are getting ready for or taking AP Biology. So there's a little bit of a rough there. That's, and so next year, it won't be such an issue, because we also are using a program from Washington DC, because, because we are under constraints, we have no money, they're giving choice free. And they have a course-based curriculum, so they give Biology in the second year. So all the kids take the CARP exam, the CARP Science in the second year. We don't do that. Some of our, some of our high schools start with Physics first. So conceivably, you know, the kids can take it in many different sequences. And so that seems to be the problem. You want to know a lot about this, that they're not going to, you know, we go through this. So right now, that's the problem. So the high school guys are trying to come up with some, you know, trying to see what they can do, but we're not going to get, I don't think we're going to get away with it because we're still under the old act. And they're trying to delay the implementation of ESSA until 17, 18. So I would recommend them.
So when will the testing begin? This year?
You have to have it this year, correct me?
This year?
Yes, it is this year, and the window is opening.
They're going to try for April.
They're trying, and then it will close sometime in May. So what that does is it will overlap with our CARP window, and then our local math testing is without assessment. And so the communication that came out earlier this week basically said students will be assessed in fifth grade, and the fifth grade test will be assessing first through fifth grade standards of the next generation science standards, and then students in eighth grade are going to be testing for those six through eight standards. So, and then we were to implement NGSS in the 16, 17 school year, so they're being tested on what?
Oh, you're being tested on what we're just now implementing.
Current, basically.
For what? I mean, so I don't know what our expectations are going to be for those test scores for fifth graders in particular.
It was just like CARP last year.
It's the same, yeah, it's the same thing.
Well, it works. I mean, at least our kids are used to being tested in math and reading. They are not used to being tested in science. Even our eighth graders now, when they went to take their placement exam at the high school, taking the hour. The science portion by far was the most overwhelming portion.
And on top of that, we have the next generation science standards, which we're, we're not able to.
They're, they're not ready. And that's, yeah, they're not ready. I mean, and that's why they're saying maybe April, they want to hustle it so that maybe.
And also that test is an online test.
So they just keep dishing down, there's no support.
Exactly. And, you know, I think that's.
In school districts, how?
Well, that's another one that's gaining a lot, a lot of steam, especially within the ESSA, and a couple of organizations want to hear in Chicago, and they're raising hands, that group that started around the testing last year in Chicago, and they are being supported by some of the very big powerhouses now, getting a lot of money. So you will continue your eyes open for what they're, they're going to do this year. Because you can't decide if there's penalties yet under the ESSA.
Do you, are you, I'm sorry, Mrs. Odom, are you still with us?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, from last, the tri-conference, one of our board members had heard that Convent Court is something that is really moving toward the doorway. Is that something that you're, is it?
I don't think so in Illinois. I think, you know, we call them learning standards, only learning standards in Illinois.
Right.
And whatever our year, whatever reporting is done at the state level, it's all, you know, the most districts have pretty much adopted them, and maybe not high schools as readily, but the young ones have, have adopted them, and they're going to be well. So I don't think they're moving out.
We didn't get much of a choice.
Pardon?
We didn't get a choice to adopt them.
No, you didn't.
Or everyone.
Yeah. I think people, you know, when people come to testify, they say, look, we're less concerned about the standards, we're more concerned about the assessments. And it goes back to the questions you were all asking around assessments. What do we do with them? I mean, they will come and have a dinner, or jerk off their love. You know, how do you compare apples and oranges? Because that's their different area here, all these kinds of things, so. So I wish I could, you know, tell you what's happening and let you know that you're asking questions, you're going to have your, and you're doing a breakdown in your district. And I want to tell you all that, and I say that in the meetings with board members don't get to hear that, I just marvel at all you can do, you know, the conditions of the state. And I know what it's like to receive, and I know what it's like when it's great, but I also know what it's like when it's not so great. So thank you for what you do, because boy, these kids are the most important they may have, so I appreciate everything you do all this, and we have to, so thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here.
Questions? Going back to funding. I'm the probably biggest problem. So it looks to me, everything I hear, is it's just, perhaps just a repackaging is what SBI wants to look like again for 16-months. Is there any that you've got a finger on, who is giving you some hope that there's some reasonable voices out there for not just nibbling around the edges and doing a pension pickup and shifting Dallas, suburban Dallas to the city, which is whatever it may sound like? Do you hear any voices out there that might eventually be ready for really undoing and redoing the funding disaster we've got?
You know, we have been working over the last couple of years really hard with Senator Manon, believe it or not. And you're not, I don't think we're going to like what they put out. It's going to be Senate Bill 1, okay? At least initially. But we have been working very hard with them. Many of us here in South Urban Club, we have, we have, we have a working group that we formed a couple of years ago with our colleagues, who we asked everyone, all the organizations to participate, and we asked winners and losers to join. And we said, look, we've got to come up with some solutions here, because they're going to take it from us, and they want some, they're going to create us out. And so last, if you remember last year's budget, Senator Manon wanted to sneak in instead of Bill 1 at the very end. And so Representative Davis, Phil Davidson, who's the chair of the House of Comms Committee, and some others in the House, really listened and said, hey, can you give me something else? And let's, you know, keep working on that long-term solution. So that's how we got what we got last year. So everybody kind of got a better preparation, and then there was, then maybe five, an extra supplemental grant that went to districts who really, really needed it. I get, I get that they made, you know, that that money's not always going to be there, and I get that. There's like 126 districts that need help immediately. We get all of that. But to do it, you know, to put out these proposals in the way that they're doing is not, is not going to do it. I mean, it's just not going to do it. So we're going to continue to work with Senator Manon and those that are drafting these bills, and they got to come up with more money. That's the only thing. So do I think that ultimately we're going to have to give a little bit? I, you know, I, I think if, right now, we just got to pretend that everything may happen. Maybe we'll get the farm rejections, maybe we'll get the pension costs. You know, I don't know what's going to, I don't know what's going to, you know, rise to the top in all of it. So, you know, you just have, whatever you're doing in your district with your money, be conservative. Just be conservative and happy, and that's all, just, yeah, Fred, you know, Fred and Amy and I, we worked together for quite some time, and so it's the same old story, you know, if you got it, here we go, you know, how you spend it. And because this is, we've never been through anything like this before. Ever, ever, ever. And so let's see what he says on Wednesday, and then he says he's ready for his budget address. I heard that on the news today, but I'm here. Governor Rums says he's ready to give his budget address. I don't care.
You're not carrying any horse that's proposing anything that would not just do this, because this is.
Just us. Just us. And we talked about that today. We're, there'll be a group of us, Rob Rosin, who's the township treasurer, I mean, he said this all along, let's give them a solution. So we've given them a couple, and they've kind of looked at us and kind of laughed. But there was, one of the business managers in DuPage County took this proposal to Robert Wald, State Board of Education. He said, oh yeah, this might work. And then he said, thank you very much, and that was it. But there are ways to do it. You can do it and not harm anybody else. And maybe you won't get any money, but you wouldn't lose any money either. And then what ours knew would go to those districts in the most need. So we have been saying this all along, and Senator Manon didn't think that was such a bad idea. The State Board said it would cost a lot of money. We said it wouldn't cost any more than what the state could raise. Just hold us harmless. And so we will continue to push that, you know, and trust me, not all our districts in South have liked that. But I think after today, I think there's a recognition that we all have to be on the same page somewhere. And, you know, somebody said, look, I really need this money, but I don't want whom my neighbor to give it to me. And so the conversation is shifting a little bit, so. So that's what we talk about. That's all I talk about. And I said, my husband came to me because he drove me tonight because I was already south on the highway that night for a meeting, so he drove me back south again. And he's so sippy here, you know, after all these years, but he could probably do the presentation himself. You know, people say, oh my God, we've been working on this since 2005. I bet you the very first funding committee I had to stab on was in 1970. So it's not 2006. It goes away that we're trying to fix this, but shame on the state. Shame on the state, yes. So we'll do our best to make it better, but kudos to all of you for what we do. And I'm going to talk to you about that. You know, and I should have, I didn't bring business cards, but you will let everybody know where I am, and call me anytime if you have questions. I would be happy to chat. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a sentence of non-renewal agreement with the STA Positive Connections. Mr. Duster?
Thank you. Well, born last Friday at 2:00, I met with Representative from Positive Connections, and I thought it was going to be a different conversation. We've had some concerns about buses being late wherever it was for kids, et cetera. So Representative came in and offered a letter, which you received, stating that they cannot fulfill their commitment to our district for busing. And according to the contract, they have six months to do this, to break their contract. So after the discussion, found out that this same letter is being presented to all of the area schools that they work with. And what I did is I quickly, I called Steve, we put this on the agenda immediately so that we could address it. Once, we're going to have a special board meeting after this today, or tonight, and we will seek to approve bids. We'll go out tomorrow for these specs, we'll send them out. And I think I'm going to bid our spec out with our elementary schools as one, our junior highs one, and then all together to see where they come in. So I want the board to know that Positive Connections are able to rebid on the specs that we will be sending out. So that will be that. We will also contact as many bus companies as we can so that we get plenty of bids from them as well. So with that being said, it kind of goes along to the next one, letter E, and that'd be approval for the bids for transportation services, which will take place in a special intersection meeting. Are there any questions?
Are you expecting this?
Yeah, they, they're understaffed right now. They have a lot of districts in the area, and I would imagine the strategy is, is that they give this letter. And I would imagine the strategy is, is that they give this letter, people go out for bid, and if they are able to capture that bid, then they will pull up those, those school districts and lessen their load. That's, that's the strategy that is being used.
You anticipate that they will bid where they were? A little bit higher or lower? Is this just...
I have no idea. I have no idea. Any other questions, then?
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, we have discussion on Division 2020. So with the agenda item, I included a link to Division 2020 through ISB. And it, I know that Mrs. Odom had gone to see the presentation at the tri-conference this year. And several board members have been to various presentations on this over the last year and a half, year and quarter. And, you know, certainly this is something that has, I think, grown and developed over the last, you know, at least since the, the presentation I saw at all South Dakota meeting. And, you know, some of my earlier concerns about, you know, what does it mean to adopt a resolution supporting this? I think we're certainly answered tonight, or addressed tonight, and certainly are reflected, I think, in a more meatier version of this that you can all access on the, on the website. And I would encourage us, you know...
Thank you for the link, too.
One second? Oh, sure, no problem. And as, what I would suggest to everybody is that, you know, I'm going to go ahead and suggest that we begin forward with this. When we do so, I hope that we will continue to look at this in the year to see if it's changed, to see what further developments happen. Because this is really, I think, a big thing for public education. And I, I think that it really is a good reflection of philosophical evolution that has happened in public education in Illinois. So with that, are there any other questions?
Where are you moving forward? The resolution?
Yeah, to adopt the resolution.
What's the, you're up to adopt?
There's a resolution that's been given to us.
I just thought we should share.
Sure. In fact, Mrs. Prino, if you could...
Open the link?
Yeah, if you would mind. And if you go to, I think it's toolkits. And it's call to action. I think it's a little bit... I think it's a little further. It's a Microsoft Word documents. It's a little further, it's a little further, it's a little further. If you don't mind, hold on. It's, right, it is board resolutions disarray. So if you could click that. And if you could open that. Okay, so Division 2020 Resolution, State's words, public education plays a defining role in ensuring equal opportunity for children in Illinois and throughout the United States. And it goes into a series of whereas. And then at the bottom, if you wouldn't mind, a resolve that we would put our pledge in here, Flossmore School District 161 Board of Education joins in the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Freedom Association, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents, and the Superintendent's Mission for the Study of Demographics and Diversity in Supporting Division 2020 Education Improvement Proposal. And give her the resolve that Flossmore School District 161 Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement recommendations under the four pillars of education improvement as contained in Division 2020 Doc. So this is something that is accessible to everybody and that it's, I mean, it's, it's vast, but it's very grounded in common sense. But it looks at four areas in which we really need to focus. This one really is reflective of our legislative support for what goes on that state. So I think that this is something that we should definitely...
Please.
Yes?
I appreciate the link because I was reading through this more than I should have asked a question that I couldn't answer. Sign to us, sign the resolution, and the potential downside is not signing it. Is it, it just seems like pretty much that we're standing rather than trying to do this?
More or less. I think it's really the show of a growing number of districts in the state of Illinois that are behind this. And it's like anything, it's like, as a matter of fact, there's a link on there to send petitions around that you, as an educator, can sign on to, as a board member, you can sign on to individually. But essentially, this is like a petition at a school board level for all these school boards in the state of Illinois to say, look, this is something that is important and that we are very serious about education as a priority.
Maybe we can point it to some things. Because the only thing when I read through it and I was really, I forgot the link, is that I didn't see anything really meaty different than, like you said, common sense that we would be doing anyway. That's the only thing I was trying to figure out, if there's something material difference that would give financial education to the districts or, or not, or how we, you know, train our teachers or develop our leadership. But I didn't see anything material in there. And I could, I could be totally wrong. I think we announced that, you could point it to some of them.
It's kind of like our, our support of the delegate assembly.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a state in the stands, they were standing. But I wanted to make sure that I understood that they were signing on to something that may be laid on financial education that I'll point you here.
Right. And that was one of my concerns. And I talked to FinChure about this in September. We had suggested that we wait until, if we have reservations, you know, we can wait until the tri-conference and see the new proposal and see how it's fleshed out a little bit more. And, you know, of course, one of my concerns is that I didn't want to sign on to something or support signing on to something where, you know, we are set up where there's winners and losers. The language you hear really is getting beyond that where there, there, it's all about, you know, winners. It's, there are no losers. And you don't want to present a situation where, you know, if you are a district that very thoughtfully saved your money and was very responsible, that somehow you're going to be penalized because, you know, now the state looks at you as, oh, you don't really need as much help or you're going to beg your funding. And so the way it is, it's worded, I, I think it's a little bit more aware, or it's, it's a little bit more self-conscious of the fact that there are no, there shouldn't be any losers, that we should be held harmless in terms of our funding. And that it's not enough just to say, okay, let's, you know, let's mix it up and let's, let's take all the bank accounts and ship them around. Because the reality is, you know, if you are a responsible district and, you know, you shouldn't be penalized for it. So, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in there. And I can certainly send you a direct link to the direct page, although I don't have time.
You don't have time. I was reading this, so I didn't see anything.
Yes. And I encourage, you know, everybody, just, I mean, this is something that, rather than look at this as one and done, like, okay, we'll sign on and then that's the end of it, really look at this as a, an evolving document where we are constantly... That's something, that's a philosophy that shapes the needs of education, of public education in Illinois.
I have a couple of questions.
To me, did you, Mrs. Odom, did you want to add?
I'm just going to add to the potential location. This will, the only potential, and that's the location that I see right now with this legislature is that if we have representatives, which of course, you know, I advocated before, that we're going to be supporting something, and we need some sort of working in as a mayor power to actually get it done. Now that they have selected out, and it's no longer just this kind of people who are sitting down, who are in fact, a lot of this in 2020, now they're trying to build a new approach to an actual, what's in relation, you know, to the ball committee. And for each, if we just be representatives, we're trying to work with this from, I think, for, on the last meeting, we're not having representatives, principals, superintendents, teachers, and ideas, ask, ask this from your family. That's Martin, for our, for the, for the, and now state, what it's, 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 what And then the second, um, anticipation is that if they propose support legislation, because this is the legislative branch of the Illinois Association of School Boards and the tri-conference people, if, if they report for proposed legislation, as they, as Vision 2020, that says the suburban districts are going to pay for, uh, or we're going to be, we're going to reduce our, our [inaudible] funding that we get to increase the city, the, the, uh, districts that are hired up. If we are support, we're saying, paying whatever the Vision 2020 committee comes up with, whatever legislation they come up with, then we're supporting them. We're saying, okay, we, we support whatever your, your work is, which is why I said I, I encourage people to get involved, to actually do the work, because you have the, the say-so at that level. If you have a, a position on, no, we are not going to support that, then you have to have somebody on one of those committees saying, no, no, we're not pushing that legislation forward.
Okay, so if, if I could, Mrs. Marcy, do you want to comment?
Um, I, I think Mrs. Odom might be confused between what Vision 2020 is and what, how, I, I think she just maybe has some fundamental misunderstandings of some of the differences between.
No, you, no, you probably have a fundamental misunderstanding, because your information is based on the beginning, the actual beginning of Vision 2020, and it's limited to that. And I'm on the, I'm on up on the information on how it's now developed. You've got conceptual, your conceptual ladder, you have those concepts of Vision 2020, and now they move forward beyond the concept.
But, but I think you're confusing recommended state policy, which is part of what Vision 2020 contains a lot of things.
We have.
And one of those would be including the people you mentioned, but establishing those people and being involved at the state level. One of the visions, one of their, one of the things that the Planks mentioned was that there should be educators serving, um, the Board of Education. Right now, there's not a role for teachers to serve on there. So I think you've, you've missed, you've missed up some of that information. By supporting, by working with the IS, uh, ISB on Vision 2020, we would not be funding anyone being a part of a committee. There's no funding required from us. Our dues as members of that association go to their legislative piece. Um, that's just, that's part of our due structure. Um, I'm not sure how you're seeing a financial pro or con, but I think your statement about a financial commitment is just wrong.
Okay, um, if I, just a second, for a second, if I might, uh, just summarize though, I, what I'm hearing, uh, you say is that, um, there would be probably an increase in actual cost to the district in terms of, uh, participating in these committees, but in participating with the committees, uh, that would give us and should give us, um, more say-so into how these, uh, how these policies are shaped. Is that what you're saying?
What committees?
Hold on a second, is that what you're saying?
There aren't pillar committees. There are no committees. There are no Vision 2020 pillar committees.
Yeah, one, so the, so the [inaudible], and when the Vision 2020 part of the update, then you would have found out that there are, that it's not only the committees, which is what the young lady just said, she's on the [inaudible]. I mean, the thing that's [inaudible], there's a [inaudible] board, there's a [inaudible], and then there's committees under each [inaudible].
Okay. Okay, if I might, um, to just end the, the individualized conversation, um, I think that, um, probably all these questions could be best resolved, again, going back to the, uh, the website, and certainly if anyone has any individual questions, you know, beyond this discussion, I encourage you, rather than getting to, you know, I'm right or you're wrong conversation, uh, with anybody, um, I would suggest, uh, all people on the board, and, you know, all people who are interested, certainly, um, go to the website, um, and if there's any questions, uh, certainly, you know, call the ISB rep, and, um, you certainly can get lots of information, um, from there. Are there any other comments or questions?
Would you like me to bring that resolution forward at our next board meeting?
I would like to, is, is, how does everyone else feel?
I'm not sure that the full word, if we're not going to discuss what Vision 2020 is or have an understanding of it, aside from telling people to go read the website, which has been there since 2012, um, I, I'm not sure how we move forward. Could you maybe take a moment and share with the board what Vision 2020 is?
Sure. Hold on. Can I, could you? You know what, actually?
Okay. You want to go on the floor next?
Yes.
See, while you're looking for that, you did mention that you had called around the other school districts to see [inaudible] neighboring districts that had signed on. Can you name the, our, what neighboring districts have signed on?
There's, there's actually a map that's on the, uh, that's on the website for ISB, or sorry, for Vision 2020, that makes it, has little pinpoints that shows you where, I think there's like 279 districts in northern Illinois, and then there's like 200 and some odd other ones in southern Illinois. And, uh, as you get closer in, uh, Hoawood has not, from looking at that map, done so. Uh, and Chicago Heights, or many, uh, Chicago Heights, uh, districts, it could be Bloom High School have not done so, uh, our high school has not done so. But again, my, my question is, is that related to their relationship with ISB? You know, some districts don't have any real involvement with ISB, some do. So, you know, that could just be a matter of they don't want to participate for some reason, whatever. Uh, or, I mean, my question with the segment was, is there a specific reason why you would not want to be interested in that?
Yeah, I, the discussions that we have, um, the first three pillars, um, are something that we agree with, um, at the superintendent association, or my association has backed this. Concern-wise in this area, when talking to superintendents, is the equitable and adequate funding. It's a concern. We just heard today that, well, we've heard it a while, but Peggy said that too, is they want to take the biggest pot within special ed and help to increase the general state aid portion. Uh, they're trying to do a cost shift. So that is a philosophical concern for, um, some of the superintendents in our area, and when those discussions take place, that is what it comes down to, is the money, the portion of the pillars. That is the, that's my concern personally. Um, I've spoken in this, or about this with my cabinet as well, and it all comes back to the [inaudible].
The funding piece is huge, and that's what, I, I think the bigger discussion to the board is, an important discussion, is what involvement we want to decide, what level of involvement on a political, um, front is important to us and our constituents. Because we stand, or lose, perhaps lose money, perhaps not lose money, it depends on how this works, and I don't know that it's all about, um, money at the margins, I think it may more be about long-term success, financial health of our district, and how it stands in the state of Illinois. That's why these things are important, that's why these policies are important. Supporting, lending our voice to supporting legislative reform in favor of our district is what this is about. Vision 2020 offers four pillars, it's very simple, it's pretty basic. The funding strategies change a lot, because they don't introduce bills, or they won't draft legislation, I'm sure that's what lobbying organizations do, but individual representatives are going to introduce the legislation. If we, our power as a board for our constituents is to unite our voice and to share that with our legislators, that's where we're missing out. My feeling is, it doesn't matter what neighboring districts do, if they're not interested in being politically active, the high school is more than willing to let us take the hit to lead the way in tax questions and tax funding for the district. I think it's more than just putting a resolution on, on an agenda at board meeting, Mr. Curtis, it's about having the discussion about what our board wants to do. That's why I asked for you to bring this up, so we can talk about it, so we should talk about it. So I suggest that we prepare and then have a talk about what the board would be to move forward in the arena of supporting adequate full and fair funding for our district and our taxpayers.
How many people have had an opportunity to be familiar with this, to read through thoroughly on the board? Is there that, I mean, kind of look at it, overread it quick. Um, I throw this suggestion out, uh, at our next board meeting, perhaps having more conversation on it, and, um, if we're okay with that, I could put, uh, I could put the resolution on the agenda to vote, or we can have more discussion at the committee board meeting in February, and move it to the March board meeting to approve, if you want more time. It is an important decision, um, if you're going to put the resolution.
I think we should do that, and then, uh, if we decide we want to table it, I think that's fine too.
Okay, so I'll just put it on the agenda, and, um, what we will do is have more discussion at the next meeting, and also have the resolution on there with a possible approval. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Everybody okay with that? That gives us more time to think about it.
Maybe our teachers, or, um, has anyone beyond the board in your immediate cabinet actually read Vision 2020 and provided any thoughts or comments?
We, in a roundabout way, yes, but nothing specific, no. Uh, we hear about it, at Scope, we have discussions, and, you know, superintendents in area, we have discussions, but this is the first discussion we've had about it, which is very helpful. But as far as our association, they've not brought this up. But, you know, it says highly effective educators, 21st century learning, shared accountability, we have those types of conversations, but it isn't directly about Vision 2020.
I mean, just in our district, like our teachers, not any of other groups that you are a part of that talk about this more broadly. Has there been any discussion within our district, uh, district level, with teachers or building, to get any of their thoughts anywhere?
There hasn't, at this point.
I don't know, it's, but that's really the, a- aside from all teachers being taxpayers, but not all being taxpayers in state and local, um, probably it would be very interesting to engage the community in what it is, so we can get, just to let them, just to let them know. And it has nothing to do with us supporting or not supporting them, you know, from that standpoint, I don't think that's really the most important thing, I don't know that that really adds a whole ton of weight to anything. I think it would be, um, to share those thoughts with community members, to see where the association that our board wants to fall on some of these things, and then gather some input from what they think, and what they'd like to see their board, their [inaudible].
I mean, I, I'd actually, I mean, given that the document was, was created by educators, them that are in this room.
Well, yeah, except, yeah, yeah.
So I, I would be interested in hearing input from educators, as well as community, as, you know, part of your suggestion. Um, I don't know if we have time for that, and, and how we can vote about that. Yeah, you've just heard the staff to read it, and if there are comments, submit them to you, but, um, you know, it's a, it's a document that was created, it sounds like it was a very inclusive document that was created by educators, it's very student-driven, um, you know, so.
We have a DLC meeting tomorrow, I can add to the agenda with a lot of our stakeholders.
So with that, why don't we move this to next board meeting, and then we continue our discussion there, and possibly after. Next on the agenda, and we have the [inaudible] Spanish textbook, Dr. Duster?
Um, yes, it, it's just basically the high school's changing their Spanish books, and you have the information provided, we have to do that with our students at junior high, and there is a, a cost for that, as you can see what is attached, and we're bringing that forth. Do you have any questions?
The other question is just about, uh, the line of 38,000 [inaudible]. I'm sure, I mean, we have somewhere down there, I don't know if you're [inaudible].
Right, um, what we will do is it will come out next year's budget, July 1st.
Go back, go back.
So we're starting a little early then? Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that's how that's going to happen? We pay, we can get it now, and then they can, that's how usually when I purchase those types of materials, or they need the money now, I've had that come out to 16, 17 million.
It depends on when you need them. Whenever I purchase that next year's budget, that's the rule I'm going to do purchase, I don't know, when you're planning on purchasing [inaudible], there's not, will we decide in the spring, is there any textbook adoption that comes to the board and you would approve that and approve additional budget for those kinds of items?
That would be outside of the budget. I think, aim, they need these, Dr. Ward, next fall, correct?
Yes, but training and stuff needs to commence. Um, HF has already had one training, and our teachers need the text to start training as well, there's going to be some more training for them with HF, so we were hoping for a spring purchase, so that they would then have the books and be able to do curriculum work over the summer.
Right, but the spring purchase can be paid in next year's budget, I believe, and we can.
I don't know.
Generally, unless you're planning on ordering in June, and the bill gets pushed off to July, but if you're planning on purchasing spring, the way publishers don't hold that up.
I, I, I would say that we found a lot of these books, and that's what happens overnight, with, with HF has already had a training on it, they can think about this a little while.
So HF contacted us in October and told us that they would be purchasing a new Spanish book. Um, HF did all of, so typically what we do for the cycle of have people come in and take that to us, HF takes care of all of that, and then tells the leader districts, this is the book that you need to purchase. And so they did invite our Spanish teachers over to be a part of some of that work, and they're purchasing this on January 19th, is when, um, the HF board approved this purchase for them. And so we've actually been involved with HF and this [inaudible].
I thought you said January 19th?
Correct.
So they've already had training? Or they've already had training on this already?
Yes, we sent our Spanish teachers over, when we came back, I believe that was on the 4th, on [inaudible] day. They went over for some training with, um, the consultant from there, and so we're piggybacking on that training, when they're bringing that in for our two teachers.
So will you, I'll, I'll check on that, see if we can, until the next budget, if we can't, then it would be outside of this year's budget.
Well, wait a minute, let me ask you a question. So, uh, how many teachers do we have that this would affect in terms of teachers that would like to plan for next year?
Two, the two Spanish teachers.
Okay, so there's two. Could we get two books, as opposed to, I mean, I assume the 38,000 is to order them all for the students, right?
Um, I, we can absolutely ask.
Because I think that if it's just a matter of, you know, the teachers want to have the book to plan with, um, that I can, you know, yeah, I mean, whatever, the ancillary, however you say that word, uh, the extra stuff that comes with the textbook, um, videos, you know, all that, you know, um, and certainly, I mean, I can't imagine the cost that much. Um, and, you know, I noticed from trying to get ahold of a pre-calculus book last year, that, um, you know, there's, even the online edition is like $15 or something, in many cases, it's very expensive. Um, is there also, I mean, resources that you borrow from high school? In worst case, I think two, two sets, I think should be.
Those teacher editions.
The only other question that you're going to have to get answered is, are quotes built based on the high school's quote, and whether the publisher is going to hold those quotes for several months if the high school is purchasing them? That's going to be your big if.
Okay, so it really, part of the question is, if we just get two now, that they might not be willing to give us the, um, the quote at that rate in July or June.
Full check out, before we bring it to the board, we'll have to report on that, but yeah, I'll bring it forward for approval.
So there's a slightly larger question. We had this happen with a textbook before, the math textbook, maybe five years ago, where they changed the textbook, changed the curriculum, and then told us, very short-term, that we would be purchasing new, new material as far as students. Could we remind them that we work in partnership with them, and that, um, we should, they know how many students they get, and part of their curriculum depends on us, and one of those students who have already taken some of those classes, and it would just be a friendly neighborhood gesture to loop us in a little earlier, and perhaps to do the purchasing, and I don't know if that's a thing that can be done, but if they're purchasing it already, then I would assume that they would be able to purchase for us and for 153, because my guess is 153 is going to be out this month as well. Um, we are a little bit, we've got a better financial handle, maybe you're able to take care of us than we [inaudible]. So, could you throw some of the whole weight of the district, the board behind that, and talk to them? That would be great. You shouldn't be blindsided.
Okay, so bring that back, Dr. Ward, look at that, and bring that back.
If Frank's question about [inaudible].
Doesn't begin, it's a further question.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, a long time ago, before we bought all the iPads, part of the argument was that if everyone had iPads, we could be buying electronic versions of the books.
These are all electronic books, that, they are, that's what this is. You, you can't see the quote, but this is all, mostly electronic. So it's all, um, it's all, it's a [inaudible] done that way. Okay.
Next on the agenda, uh, we have a discussion of fee waiver guidelines. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that? I'm sorry, um, next on the agenda, we have the 2016, 2017 [inaudible].
Thank you. Next year's calendar is quite a challenge, it comes around about every seven, eight years. And, um, what we've done is, we've had, uh, discussions, 153 at high school, myself, superintendents, and all of our breaks will line up. And if you take a look at, I might go through this quick, but winter break, the high school, their students will be done with their finals on Thursday, the 22nd, and they will be done, their teachers will be coming back on the 23rd, Friday. What I'm proposing in this agenda, or with this calendar, is that our last day will be Thursday, and then the kids will be coming back, um, January 10th. So on January 9th will be a teacher institute day, that would be the same amount of time as what the high school has. Uh, spring breaks are the same, that's one of the goals the Board of Education wants to have, with the high school and elementarys being the same. So, because of some of the things in the calendar next year, it's a little bit tricky, and I have to let the board know that, uh, Ms. Kubis has gotten back to me on some suggestions, and trying to, um, look at and see if I can make anything work. So before our next approval of this at our next meeting, um, I will, I'll address that to see if there's any way that I can, I can add, what has been suggested. But on Friday, August 19th, would be a teacher institute day. Um, originally, we had Thursday and Friday, two days of teacher institute day, however, there's, um, a concern as we move on. Uh, you'll see, the first day of school will be the 22nd for the children, we want to start them on a Monday, so they get a full week, and then, uh, we have the open houses, et cetera. Last year, we had quite a bit, are we, quite a few half day, or no, actually, this year, we had quite a few half-days for professional development of our staff. There are only two that take place this year. One, um, is early fall, and one is in May. Uh, I'm sorry, it's not early fall, it is, um, before conferences. So that half-day, the teachers have to use that day for preparing for conferences, and at the end of the year, that half-day will be prepared to assist with, um, schedules for the following year.
[inaudible].
The which one?
What if it'd be in here?
Uh, this should be in May.
Thank you for making all the early releases on Friday. That is a huge improvement.
Wait, where was that, maybe it's in [inaudible]? I think that was the 26th.
Did they [inaudible]?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's one and a half, so, this is only a wrap, I'll run it for, I'll be able to check on that. So we have the open houses in there, that first school, and [inaudible] on the second, um, then as we move ahead, we will, you know, you have the Labor Day, et cetera. The concern that comes into play, that was hard to work with, um, is on Monday, October 10th, that's Plumless Day, we do not have school on that day. On the 11th, we have a teacher institute day, that's a regular school day for our teachers, we will keep our children home, because the next day is Jean-Claude Bourne. It makes it difficult to bring the children back one day in between those two. So that is what, um, we're recommending at this time. There's been some suggestions from, uh, the association that we're looking at in regards to that. So as you see, we have Veterans Days, we go through, we have teacher conferences, uh, the winter break, uh, there's Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, there's still the Casimir [inaudible], our spring break, Good Fridays on April 4th, that is being celebrated then, we have Memorial Day. It is our hope to, um, be out of school if there's no snow days, by June 7th, graduation would take place on June 5th, because of the calendar, June 5th is a Monday, I believe. So, um, I don't think we've ever had a graduation on Monday, and we're still checking with the high school. Uh, reason why we, first of all, I had like the 9/31st, we have snow days, kids will be on a long time, um, [inaudible]. Kids will be on a long time, um, before school is over, so that's why we chose that day. So, that's the calendar.
Just about Casimir Blaski Day, we can run that and check. Is, um, every year I have my children going, he's looking at it, reminding, is it, is this a, I mean, I know it's on National Holiday.
It's in Illinois.
Illinois, is it Chicago or Illinois?
Illinois. If we had school on that day, we would just have to teach about them in school. We can try to get them here, we can ask for a way, or can we ask? Every year I ask. How many can you have this?
We haven't, um, it's something we, we couldn't do. It was important for the.
Polish year.
Yes.
Right, then you teach the curriculum in school, which would be really good.
So can you just explain again, um, the teacher institute day? And it sounds like it's not flexible and it's not easy to move that day. I mean, because they have October tenth, eleventh, and twelfth out.
The tenth is.
Oh, no, I, I think, I, I see what it says. So the thing that I say in between is a teacher institute day. So I'm just asking whether or not there's flexibility of moving that day. So there are pretty consecutive days in October where kids are out.
Right, um, okay. So you would bring them back, the children on Tuesday. In my experience, um, the, the attendance rate is very, very low.
Well, doesn't it have, does the teacher institute day have to be that week?
No, I can move it anywhere, right.
It would be another week so that they don't, they're only missing two days in that week instead of two days.
I think the conversation is different. What you're saying is that was kind of purposely put there so that there are not off, one day, two, one day, that, that they get off again. Let me ask you a question, though.
That is.
Oh, I think that, that is all happening in one week, yes. That's, that's kind of, that, that's a challenge. But if, it's not, if all of the on, off, on, off is not happening in the same week.
It is.
It is.
Because the tenth and twelfth have to be, there's no school on the tenth and twelfth.
Right, so I, I think that.
Go ahead.
No, you're asking the question, that's what I debated on. Do we bring the children back that day?
Right, and then you have them off again the following, or do you just have them off for three days?
And remember, our teacher's contract is a hundred and eighty-one days, it's not a hundred and eighty-day contract. So that would put them there. We could have, well, you're, there's three choices. You could have the kids in, you get a teacher institute, or you could have an N I, N I A day, which no one comes to work on that day. And then you make it up at the end of the year.
Would still have the kids out for each year?
Yeah.
Yes, I know, I told you. I just gave it from the, it's, it's a challenging calendar this year. Any other questions?
Okay.
Because the high school will be, will, they don't, they don't have any, so pets and kids will be at school on this.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, so.
Can I ask a quick question? There's, there's two drafts you have on, uh, on the board docs. Is there, are they identical? Just a.
On the show, if you want. What, what, what do you mean, this, this one?
There's two here. Is it just a repeat one?
I'm not sure why there's two.
It's a good to get.
Okay. I can do both of them.
All right, so we'll bring that forward. If I have any other information, um, I will add that as well.
Are there any further questions or comments?
Are we gonna consider a waiver for the last one?
Uh, we can make that.
It's okay, it's okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Parent University, Fosmore Internal University, non-T-shirt consultant proposal. Dr. Duster.
Thank you. Um, board had asked me to bring a proposal to the Board of Education, um, for discussion purposes. And as you know, we've been doing this for a couple of years, and it's, it keeps advancing throughout the years. This proposal, um, is also connected to our strategic plan as we move ahead, with that as far as community engagement and helping to communicate with our community. So with that being said, I would ask Ms. Tomassino to come up and give a presentation.
Ladies and members, on behalf of my, um, fellow administrators, I am here to talk about the proposal that you have in front of you that is Fosmore Internal University as, as Parent University for the February through May timeframe. As you can see in your, your current document, there's an executive summary, and in that summary, it does give you the overarching budget for the two programs together as well as separate. What I'd like to do is just leave you a few of the notables and give some background on some of the history of both of those programs, and then, um, answer any clarification items that I need to, so that you can make your, um, decisions. Uh, so Fosmore University, or Fosmore Internal University started in, um, thirteen, fourteen, and it started as a system where there was an additional budget based with a stipend. As it moved into our last year, fourteen, fifteen, uh, we, in the school district, started to expand what that service offered, and it became not only a stipend-based kind of budget, uh, as well as part of the teacher contract and the support that the teachers do, teachers training teachers. Um, and then this year, it is part of the teachers teaching teachers as well as there's an additional, there was an additional budget that was, um, organized in the last, or the first semester of the school year. Um, just to let you know, the FIU program here is just one of the professional learning structures that we have to support our teaching staff. We also have, um, uh, learning communities that happen in the, there's job embedded training, there are pull-out cohort sessions that we do to help build the capacity of our educators. We heard a lot today about the ever-changing business in schools with the new curriculum standards, the new testing, and things like that. So that's a little bit of the history. To let you know how we arrived at getting sessions and the topics of sessions and things like that, uh, you'll see in your proposal, there's some needs assessment sources there. But so much of the conversation that goes on in our school district is related to what are the needs of our teachers? What can we put in place to assist them? So you'll see that, um, almost all of our, um, administrative meetings have some sort of connection to that needs assessment and that feedback loop, loop. Likewise, we also have a professional learning committee in our district that gives us feedback, and it's made up of members of the teaching staff, the administrative staff, um, various people coming together to say, hey, this is what we really need to support our teachers in the teaching and learning environment. We also have, um, informal discussions by educational staff, and, um, our teachers do propose their sessions that they would like to do. There's feedback that happens after each of those sessions. And then also, part of our FIU structure is based on a lot of those ISVE initiatives that come down, or some of our strategic planning initiatives in curriculum and assessment. So that's really, um, some of our, our structure for our FIU and the background for that. You will see in your proposal, from February to May then, some suggested sessions that would be part of the proposal that you see here. There's also FIU that's done as a teacher-to-teacher and a part of that contract. You don't see that here, that is currently ongoing. If I can jump over to Parent University, it has a similar history. It started about the same time. It was the thirteen, fourteen school year, that, that was, um, the budget was a stipend-based environment. Um, in fourteen, fifteen, we also had a stipend-based environment, but we did expand Parent University and brought in some experts from outside the district, and those all tend to be grant-based dollars that were supporting that, whether they were local grants that we had here or part of the I C four or some other statewide, um, grant system. And then this year, uh, the, the things that we're doing in, uh, Parent University has expanded. Again, we used, uh, this past fall, there was an additional budget. And then part of that system where our teachers, we expanded where the teachers are sharing and doing Parent University sessions for our, um, our parents. So it's grown, both those programs have grown from their initial thirteen, fourteen start until what we have here. How do we go about coming up with Parent University sessions? As you can see in your proposal there also, there are needs assessment sources. And we definitely have that kind of conversation again at our administrative level, as well as bringing that through the teachers and saying, here's what we know. We'd like to, you know, have the parents understand, here's some programs going in across the state. We also have feedback from the parents. We had a survey that happened in, I believe it started in like an April to June timeframe, maybe April to July, saying to the parents, you know, what would you be interested in for the following school year? So that we could put the cycle together for this school year. And then after every session, we gain feedback from our attendees to say, you know, what else are you looking for? What else could help you strengthen that home and school connection? So as you can see there, then the session descriptions from February to May relate to those topics. At the end of the proposal, you'll see the proposal timeline for both sessions of both, um, systems, the FIU as well as the Parent University, and the total cost to, um, to this proposal.
Are there any questions? Comments?
Can you describe just a little bit, um, because the cost for each session is the same. Can you just speak a little bit about how you get on the total cost?
Um, that was something that the administrative team put together based on current, uh, consultants that they bring in, current, uh, grant systems and what a going rate is. I think for that, so it was kind of common to do that.
And are these, these are all presented by, um, people who are employees by the district?
Um, yeah, if you look at your, um, proposal, you have that information right after each session.
Okay, so, um, and I guess this is my, my bigger concern is, have we looked at a comparison of what other parent universities in other districts are doing in terms of how much they're spending on this? I've looked initially, um, at our neighbors in terms of, you know, people, you know, parent universities in other districts where I've, I've thought they've done interesting work or really great work. And, um, you know, just to be very frank, it's been significantly less, especially for, um, people that already are employees of our district. And so I guess what I would like to see, if I were to accept this, would be some sort of comparison of what other districts are doing and, um, how much they're spending on this. Because, you know, even at HF, um, that, they're not, it's, it's nowhere near this. I mean, for an administrator, for someone who is a twelve-month employee in a regular school year, they're not paid this for, um, for an hour of, uh, of these professional developments or for, uh, uh, parent workshops. And that's the part I, sorry, I just can't seem to get around. So if, um, I saw a comparison where I could really look at, okay, well, what's the value added for the cost of this? Uh, I would be more interested in, in this. But in, independently of the price tag, I think that you've done a great job. I think that certainly, um, our Parent University offers a lot of great courses for our parents as well. And I think that certainly our Fosmore Internal University, um, certainly offers a, a lot of great, um, development opportunities for our, uh, for our teachers. And, um, so I, I would like to see, if I were to accept this, I would like to see how this compares to, um, to other comparable districts, comparable programs that, um, you know, would help me sort of understand, you know, the expenditures for each of these. And, uh, I, I would also like to see, you know, the numbers in terms of, you know, who has been attending for the ones we've already had, and, uh, do we see growth from last year? Um, and it really just comes down to what is the value added for the money that we're putting into this? Independently of that, I think that is a great effort. I think that we should continue to work with this.
Any other comments?
I, I don't personally need to see a comparison, but I do, you, you mentioned that it was an hour. Can you just, because I'm assuming the, the amount, especially since it is the same amount for every session for both, um, um, teachers, the, the teacher training and parent training, the time allotted for each of these is, because you said it's an hour. So I'm assuming it's, it's, the presentation is an hour, but there's prep, like, can you just explain a little bit of your.
Sure, if you look at the last, if you look at the last page of your proposal under the proposed timeline, it shares both with Parent University as well as, um, Fosmore Internal University, the timeframe that the district kind of has set for those, those structures and, and those training sessions. And absolutely, as you just suggested, that person doing that training, of course, would have their, their preparedness for the session there.
Um, Mr. Price, you referenced specific, specifics for other districts doing parent universities. Could you share those with us?
I could not because I'm not an expert on those, but I would encourage the administration to, um, bring those forward. Um, I've only done a cursory look.
Could you share the information? I mean, you, it sounded like you had specific dollars and you said you worked at the high school at HF.
Yeah, that's really my personal investigation, just to get help, uh, getting better background understanding of this. Um, you know, certainly, I, I would, I would encourage anyone to investigate themselves.
So you don't want to share with us?
I'm not ready to present, no, I'm not ready to do a presentation on it.
Okay.
I don't have any thing.
A dollar amount HF pays for their parent, do, do they have a parent university?
They do.
And how much do they pay your presenters?
Uh, well, they don't pay, let's see. The summertime, um, I think that they pay roughly for an all-day session, uh, they pay their teachers about, I think, two hundred and forty dollars, that's the, um, summer school rate.
So, I'm sorry, so HF has parent university, all-day parent university sessions during the summer?
Yeah, they have, um, they have workshops that they do. And, uh, by the way, all this information is accessible if you actually call the high school.
But you're in it already.
Well, that's, I think, you're interrupting me. And that, um, in the summertime, if you are a presenter, that you get double your contracted, uh, summer school rate. Okay, during the rest of the year, where they have professional development, you know, they don't, as far as I know, I haven't seen documents to prove this, but, uh, they do not pay their, uh, twelve-month administrators to do that. Um, I believe there is a compensation of roughly, I don't know, thirty, thirty-five dollars, thirty-six dollars per hour for, um, for teachers who are doing, um, workshops with, uh, with their colleagues. Uh, generally speaking, I, from what I understand, it's not near this. Um, and it is based on an ongoing rate comparable to extradining.
So you don't, you don't actually have any specifics?
No, but you can go get them.
Well, no, you said you had specifics, so I thought you would share those specifics with your cohort numbers.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we end our personal discussion on this. And are there any other comments that anyone else would like to make?
Ms. Harold, do you have any comments? So this is the proposal to the board. Mr. Simmons, do you have any questions?
I could put the proposal as is, I was good with it when we originally approved it back in August.
All right, thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a discussion of fee waiver guidelines. Dr. Duster?
Yes, thank you. Um, this has come up. We have outstanding dollars from, um, on our student accounts. And we believe we understand what the, why there's outstanding dollars, there's other reasons as well. However, uh, Ms. LaBelle, if you'd like to come up and go through this other scenario that we, um, discussed, and we, we think it will assist as far as, um, helping our families who can't play.
There's, there's a couple of situations here, but the one that we want to discuss tonight is, in the spring, we did approve that anyone who had a direct certification, so are receiving boot stamps or are on some sort of, uh, direct offer from the state, that we would automatically approve, um, their, and waive their fees without having to fill out the extra, um, you know, information. What we're finding now is we have quite a few people who are on free or even. What we're finding now is we have quite a few people who are on free or reduced lunch, but they're not filling out the fee waiver process. They're also not paying fees. So we've got an awful lot of people chasing a whole lot of people who don't have the needs. Um, so, you know, going through this in my head, trying to figure out what's the best allocation of our resources as well as what's realistic. Um, what I kind of came up with was a recommendation and said, okay, what if we approved free or reduced, anyone who qualifies for free or reduced lunch based on the application to waive their fees, but test ten percent of them? If you are getting free or reduced paying lunch based on income information that you've provided, we will test ten percent of those. Those people will be required to come in and prove their income status for us. Um, and that way we know that we're waiving appropriately. Um, if we test ten percent and we're finding that the majority of them actually don't qualify under the regulations, we would expand it to another ten percent if we find we really have a problem that we, we reevaluate the whole thing and say, no, we go back to a name director. And anyone who wants to have their fees waived is going to have to produce the income verification.
And the ten percent is more than the state's?
The state, but right now for a free or reduced lunch, when we are verifying that on annual basis, we're only verifying two percent. So this is a lot more than what we're required to do for the national school lunch program. Um, but my hope is that we stop, kind of chase that out a little bit here.
The question is about the parent and the state. Was the state allowed to know what they had children at the ten percent or still, I know the first place I'm not going to go with the fee type here. And so I don't pay the fees. And as a parent, you know, and that's exactly it.
Well...
And that's, that's kind of the problem that we have right now. I mean, you don't care, you don't care. I mean, that's where I started, you know, giving you these, these numbers. We've got several, you've got significant balances that are a great, and they're not going to care, and it kind of comes to names. And then we're going to be caring for parents. By we, I mean the junior high. And they become, that's it. And, and, and our, our question is, you know, what do we really have that we can hold to get payment? Now, you know, Dr. Duster and I started having some conversations this morning, what we can do maybe at the younger levels to try and get better payment of fees, even not even people who are, or do put people who are full-paid lunch, um, our collections are hurting. So we've got some ideas, but we're still battling around it and, and trying to figure out how to, to get there. But we do have quite a few people who just choose not to pay. And send you, sending letters and so on, it's just really not seeing it.
We've also banned, so the ban issue of not paying, they just don't, they don't start. That, that one was easy to do.
A nice question, I think, maybe they don't have to pay for it. They'll do it to apply, um, if the letter's not working, is it going to be, uh, that would be the assumption that, why do you don't recommend that a lot of people? But they got to get off the paperwork to register, and then, uh, do they have to pay for it right here?
Here's the thing, for your waiver process, it's not just filling out paperwork. We're requiring them to show people they need. So they've got to come up with a paycheck. They have to come up with what the household income is for us to approve it. A lot of people are just not wanting to do that, and so they're not.
So what's required for them to complete the free or reduced lunch?
All I have to do is complete the application. We pact you by federal law, take that application on face value. Now, how your fee process is set separately, so there's a separate application that requires them to produce the evidence of that income. I cannot use that evidence to touch that free or reduced lunch application. Okay? So there's this kind of dotted line here that we're going back and forth with. Um, I am able to go to an adult conference where we've got attorneys that are talking specifically on this topic because it's become quite a hot topic around state. Um, what can we do, or can't we do? What are our ramifications? How do we collect fees or not collect fees, especially when we have CPI of point seven in a state that they're built? So this is not an uncommon problem, and it's becoming more and more common, but...
As far as the nutrition, Ms. LaBelle, are the food? By waiving those or having direct served, that should benefit, the school does sort of, I don't know, benefits is the right term I should be using, but we reimburse our disposal.
We have, I mean, when, once they're on free or reduced lunch, I mean, there is, you know, the piece that the, the beds are paid, and so does the state for the, the lunch piece itself.
For me, yes.
Yeah. The, the, where we, where we're going to come to some things, and one of the questions that I especially have for the attorneys, is we have people who are qualified for free lunch, but they haven't filled out our waiver process. And now with holding things over their head, do they, you know, where is the law coming down on this that says we can't have kids who are paid? And that's really that gray area that everyone's kind of skating on right now.
And students are allowed to register even if they have an outstanding balance?
Oh, yeah. Because they're free, I mean, that's, they're definitely, right?
That's where we're at. That's where we catch them. There needs to be some decisions. Mr. Kim, he's waiting for some answers from us.
Yeah, we've got a collection of their lunches. You know, a house out of the water right now. What have we got in the past?
There's been a lot of, actually, we, um, best term to use is hound people for it. Um, it's, it's been tough, and we try to put teeth in the things that we do. That's how we, I've kind of dealt with it. As far as the past, the rules have changed with the free and reduced applications. Um, you know, we had a direct serve two years ago, was it last year? We did that last year. It used to be they fill out an application, we weigh it, since if they qualify, and it's done, and the things have changed more a lot. So this is, we're kind of going back to the central, and we need to find out more what we can legally. Um, as an educated woman, or kids, want them to have the full experience, we shouldn't blame the children if they're not responsible for paying the bill. So, but that's the things where the moral dilemmas that we're having. But also, now we have a lot of money, and that's outstanding, right?
And ours here is we can't hold educational curricular things alike, no matter what, whether they're free, reduced, or paid, we just can't. So, you know, it really comes down to the only thing that we have is that being free fees, because everything else is tied back into the budget.
Well, there's some other, like, I'm sure, I mean, there's, it's minimal, it's not, it's not a thousand dollars.
Right. So...
Well, it, it may not add that dollar value, but it's got a huge tangible value.
Yes, it does.
So I don't advocate switching at all. I understand it's a headache, it's not your, our court competency, but I don't, I also don't think it's, just forget about it and go with the lowest common denominator in terms of approval and apply that broadly because it's easy. It's, that's not fair to the taxpaying body, I, yeah, this is my opinion.
Can I ask, what, Dr., what do they need to do to prove free or reduced lunch? They have to verify?
For the lunch, they have to, before, and they, and on face value, they tell us what it is of everything, and when we get approved, we check. Based on that, we can, we have our question, it's on checking here, based on federal standards. Um, yeah, then the question is, is the waiver process?
Is our waiver process consistent with that of other districts?
I would say that the majority of districts just basically want a free or reduced lunch application. They, they apply and they qualify, they, very many districts have a separate process like we have here, just because it's difficult to administer.
Okay, can we just have a chat? What do we mind?
Most of the time they come through and they have an evaluation. Um, occasionally, actually, I mean, I, in my experience in checking though, I've had sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, how many years? Um, we'll actually have ones that are reduced and we actually change the grade. Some may go free or reduced. Rarely do I see anyone go the full day. Uh, and a lot of them are common and threatened to not, you know, you're about to do free lunch, but they'll eventually come in with a petition.
And then that petition is not, it's not overly burdensome?
It's, it's like a paycheck.
A paycheck?
Yeah, like you, and you rent a apartment or to, you kind of finance a mortgage or... It's really usually...
Did you say there's a self-esteem issue tied with this, that people are just reluctant to bring that they're on free or reduced lunch or...
They're asking for a higher...
Yeah, I, I don't know, so they don't know. Um, I think for some, what we see happen especially is as the kids get older, they're not even applying for the free lunch. The kids are going, oh, they're bringing something or, you know, whatever, they don't want. They're more cognizant of what it means.
Okay, and so is it the, just to clarify, is it the kids who are filling this out or the parents?
No, it's the kids.
Okay, so the parents are, but as the kids get older, they're just, they're not keeping up with that, they're not pursuing it, and, and they don't follow it for their parents? And their parents don't keep up?
It just, you know, we give them, we, you know, we give them the application, we provide it.
Do you give it to the kids or do you send it to the parents?
Send it home. Is the application not for that, not being taken in the registration to those, I think?
It is to be right, if it's on the kids' name. And we, we physically put one into the hand of every single parent when they came in here for a discussion.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Every single parent or...
Everyone who showed.
Every single parent who showed.
Everybody walked in, who presented, they put it in their hand, or made them go to the station, whether they liked it or not.
So at our next board meeting, we will put this, um, for, we'll move ahead for approval. And if the board wants us to do it as we're doing it right now, we will do that by going no, and if it wants to move ahead, of course. Thank you.
Not easy to say, we put it on there, move along.
Okay, next up on the agenda, are there any other questions? Next up on the agenda, we have a discussion of superintendent's evaluation tools. Um, I put this on the agenda because I wanted to give board members a chance to ask questions if they had them. What I'm going to suggest, and also talking to Dr. Duster, um, is that we put this on to committee. Um, to do so, because we are down a committee member from the super evaluation tool last year, I'm going to ask that board members email me if they have an interest in being a part of this committee, and, you know, certainly, Ms. Harold, you know, I would love for you to be on the committee, but, you know, if you can send me some interest as well, um, then I will, I will go ahead and formally committee and, um, they can look at this, and they can report back to the board in reasonable time.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Harold. I think the committee need to take a look at it. Um, there's some things that need to be tweaked in regards to it, you know, process of draft process, um, and then some other discussion. I'd be glad to sit in on the committee with you as well, if you need some, if you have any questions or anything, I'd be interested.
Does that sound reasonable?
It sounds like a great idea. How does that affect the timeline you've created at the last meeting?
The timeline stays the same, um, but the committee would, would put all effort to make sure they can report back in reasonable time.
Maybe we'll be at ten o'clock tonight.
That's right. Go.
That time is, what day is the evaluation supposed to be completed?
Self-evaluation for the superintendent was February nineteenth, and then roughly about four weeks afterwards, expectation of board would respond to that through Google Docs, which they would send to me, I would collect and put them onto one single document. And then, um, at that point, I don't have the steps in front of me, which are, actually, they're in the, uh, evaluation tool on the board docs. Um, you can all look at them, but at that point, um, the, uh, the vice president and I would meet with the superintendent and discuss, um, the, the individual and summarized, uh, responses from the individual seven board members.
So to clarify what you said, um, if the superintendent filled out his evaluation, then that evaluation would go to every board member, and then every board member would respond to their evaluation?
Just like it was last year.
I think that's a change in how it's last year.
It is exactly how it was for us.
I thought, I, I don't believe we responded to this evaluation. I don't think any board member, maybe we're done independently.
Okay, when I say responds, I mean, I don't mean responding to the superintendent. I mean, it's...
No, no, I mean, you're saying that we would see his evaluation and we would respond to his comments as we saw them in his evaluation?
Yes.
So we would not have an opportunity to complete the evaluation independent of knowing what Mr. Duster thought his evaluation was?
Oh, no, there, as I remember...
Superintendent placed self-evaluation devices under support ratings, did support members' improved evaluation, provided numerical rating and supported documentation. The board president consolidates and summarizes it into one document, will be reviewed by the superintendent. Board presidents, superintendents review document, board institute superintendent review evaluation, superintendent provide sponsor evaluation, final evaluation document.
So the board members do not see the superintendent's responses prior to completing our own individual evaluation of the superintendent? Is that correct?
That's what I think, we need to go to the committee.
That's, that's, yeah.
Well, are that being...
Clarifying that, or...
Yeah, I don't think that would clarify it.
I think that should be clarified by, um, by next, target clarification, uh, before next regular board meeting.
So I was looking at his definitely the days I missed before, because we need to post the committee meeting, how many days before?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, okay, so today, the twenty-fifth, next board meeting on the eighth.
What's your opinion?
Okay. I'm... Okay, I'm... Okay, I'm... Okay. 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 So the question was, the evaluation was the evaluation, so the first year we're doing it, call it pilot, call it not, but if there's any tweaks or changes, have a conversation. And there was no document to changes that I had or conversations that was had afterwards. I know we had the Senate forum, I thought, what did you think, and there was a lot of, okay, well, it's a tool, because we took it before the discussion of the IASB rep.
Robert Tony.
Robert Tony, got input from her about changes, I think we have a place to input, here's some of the changes made. But after that, we hadn't had any more conversations around, and no one had brought up if there was any significant material changes. Yeah, that's not, that wasn't the question, the question was if there was a, there needed to be a little clarity and we thought maybe you would ask more about the, what the minutes reflect, which was that it was a pilot year and that another meeting would take place in June of this past summer to review the tool and to go forward. So I'm assuming that that's what this committee meeting then will do, it will be that meeting that didn't take place in June.
No.
So we just didn't have that meeting in June to discuss the.
If, in fact, if, if in fact, this is how I remember, and I think this is our discussion from our last board meeting. If in fact, that meeting that we were going to do that, which I don't believe we agreed we were, and keep in mind that we did have a change in, in board for Los Llanes thing, as well as a.
As a.
As a. As a. That it didn't take place, and I don't think it was part of the plan to evaluate it then, but I did say last time, I thought that was an excellent idea, and I think after this board cycle, we definitely should do that in June. In terms of where we are now, this, you know, we have a legal obligation to do this, as I think that we should stick to the timeline. As I said. And, you know, I think that in terms of having the committee look at it, I think we should look at it in terms of are there any things that we need to really look at critically? One of the things that, as an example, came up last year was the assessment key. We thought we made some changes on that, so that we had to do an actual agenda, okay? In terms of, you know, looking at this part of the process where the superintendent is able to do his superintendent evaluation, self-evaluation, I don't believe that the tool, as it stands now, is something that we would have to stop all progress on the self-evaluation to go forward, but certainly, if we did see something, then we should address. I talked to Perry Hill earlier today, or maybe it was last week, and he had said that, I had run by him, you know, where our schedule was, and he thought that it made a lot of sense. And certainly, as it coincides with our, our board retreat on the 23rd, that, on the 23rd, that at that point, if new board members have any questions, that would be an excellent time to, to ask him, and that would afford them enough time to look at the superintendent's self-evaluation as they are engaging in their component of the evaluation process. And having that context, be able to ask more productive questions. So.
Just a side note, that evening is board self-evaluation.
Yes.
So the board reevaluating each other that evening.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the action of the board that's reflected in the meeting where we discussed this, you're just, we don't have to abide by.
No, I think that, well.
To do in those minutes.
I can't verify that that's what was said, there seems to be.
Well, the minutes are the 17th of December.
Oh, you were.
No, no, you were last year, December 17th of 2014. It was a meeting we had with Guardians Superintendent, a validation tool. So that, and that's just my question, I mean, it's, that was where that, that question was from, when we said pilot year and it's not, not to, to not use the tool, I don't believe that's what pilot means at all, but, I mean, I believe that that means it's a, you get your test and you just tried it and see what, what you wanted to improve or jettison, and then that conversation was supposed to have been had in June. And if that conversation wasn't had, it wasn't had, it doesn't mean that the board at that time didn't ask for it to happen and assume it would happen, and I think that's why that tool, my senses, that's why that tool was approved like that, because there was an agreement.
I vaguely, I'm sorry. I vaguely remember the discussion about that, those minutes, and whether that verbiage actually took place or whether that was, you know, an approximation of what was said.
Well, that was another meeting where you held the minutes for several months. But if you voted, and if you voted to approve those minutes without having them mentioned, I, I would assume that that, that means that you approved those minutes.
You know what, I would have to go back and review my notes.
Perhaps you could, those minutes.
Yes, they are. I would answer back, review my own notes.
But your notes aren't part of the official minutes. So we're having this discussion now about what we're going to do, and my question is, if this committee is willing to communicate, I think it's an excellent idea, what will that committee do, and what will the timetable be? I think that's a fair question.
I think we established the timetable, I think that we.
You don't know who's on the committee.
That the, no, I don't.
And we don't know what tool they'll be using.
What do you mean what tool?
You sent us a draft tool that's completely incomplete, it doesn't have any, it's got nothing in it. It has no goals, no, no, nothing, none of us can use it.
Those are to be populated by the superintendent. Okay, all those, okay, so looking at this.
So the superintendent has helped us.
We will go through this again.
Goals and evaluating, so he has his own goals?
No, 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 we did this back in the summer when the superintendent took his goals, okay, he's supposed to put them in here, okay, this is how I remember this, Mr. Serrano, if I'm incorrect, let me know. The superintendent is to put his goals, populate them into the tool, okay? He is to provide evidence that he has met these, and then underneath we have comments for board members. We took this, we created a Google Doc. At that point, we, once that was completed, I got a copy of the superintendent's evaluation as it was populated with the goals, which also include six, it's of ISLE standards at the end, with indicators of achieving those goals with the self-rating, and with a list of evidence pieces that support that he has met those goals. That came a large binder that was tabbed out per goal, so that it supported what his plans were that he had met those goals.
So we don't provide the superintendent the goals, he, he provides us.
They're part of his contract, this is the discussion we had in August.
And what about part two, the board expectations, how is that to be included?
That was optional, wasn't it?
It was for the first year, I believe that was why we were supposed to see if we were going to.
Yeah, it's, if the question is root for that, then we didn't suddenly say, okay, it's, it's January, now we have all these expectations. And you start your self-evaluation, you have to put that in there as well, it's, it doesn't fit in at all.
Okay, so that should be removed, the committee might recommend that that be completely removed from the evaluation.
No, when that is a, that's an option that we voted on, that would be a significant change to take that out, but in terms of a tool, if, if that's something over the summer, over June, you know, at some point, we decided that, you know what, we, you have your goals, but we would also like more trees planted on the property, and we think you should make that a priority as well. So we wanted to include that in the superintendent evaluation tool. And, you know, we're going to look for evidence for that, that's something that would have to be addressed. Since that doesn't exist, we don't have any optional expectations, we're strictly, strictly, excuse me, strictly sticking with the superintendent goals, which are part of his contract. Indicators that he has met those goals, which the superintendent will include it in self-evaluation. And a, a binder of sorts of evidence that supports that. Now, in November, the superintendent provided us with a, what was it, what do we call it? It's a progress. On the goals, which is, comes out of our conversation that we have the superintendent in May, which was really intended to help him with his self-evaluation, so that suddenly he's not faced with gathering volumes of information to support his success in this community, in this district, in the period of, oh, six weeks. This is something that would give him a leg up on the self-evaluation process. I, I kind of feel like we're going over and over, kind of the minutia here, I don't know.
Yeah, but this is too, but just to reiterate, the purpose of it, this was, one, to fulfill the allegation of the previous superintendent, but there were certain considerations. Something's supposed to be a tool that starts that dialogue, is a tool for a formal dialogue between the board and superintendent to assess performance against agreed upon goals and standards. Is that supposed to be a creative action, so therefore, things are established upfront. Transparent and it's intent, accountability tool, evaluations and comments are assigned and should be assigned by board members, there's no line comments. Tool for evaluation, when did you accomplish it, how did you accomplish it? It is an angle through tool, transparent rating, providing a transparent rating system, and providing the opportunity for the superintendent to provide evidence, opportunity to sub-assess, provide opportunity for comments, provide opportunity for summary. I can send this to everyone again, I don't, I can't, I will send this to everyone again, you haven't seen this too, this is, when we started the tool, it was, and this was based upon IASB tools, a multitude of tools that were sent to us, so that was pretty out of line, we didn't put anything out of the air. We reviewed the individual tools we got with the superintendent on 9/17 for recommendations, who wasn't included in our files, we got the committee on 9/19, in open session to review, six tools, shared input, and then summarize the information, brought it back, made a recommendation. There was other comments and questions that were presented by the IASB rep, and a couple of the board members had a thing, so we went back and changed it. Then it was put into a final format. I can, I will send this, let me flip back to review with the committee. I'm not sure where, if the intent is just to make sure this tool is correct, so that we enjoy it and make sure we have an evaluation, if it is to delay this, I, I just feel like we're getting stung into some real minutia that is not at all in line with the intent of this, it is not. We only have a conversation with our superintendent and have a means to have it documented, so that there is nothing surprising, not yet, anyway, also, so. My intent is to have. All I can start to use, and if we don't have one, we can start to use, because I don't, all we have is a draft from last year that doesn't have any goals now, so what I'd like to say, I mean, I would think what the board would have, what I'd ask Mr. Perez's board was to get the tool that Mr., that Dr. Duster had been provided with, which I imagine would have included the goal, and he would be including those. I thought we would have that complete document for us to begin to look through, we've got a large chunk of information that we already, that we've already been, you know, peeling through. And if this isn't a.
So is this called a tool, but the tool is not populated, because I've been on popular that.
Yeah, no, the tool is not populated, and we asked about that before, and then, I thought we had gotten populated, so that, you know, the back end was, I just told her this was the same tool that was given to Dr. Duster, so he doesn't have a populated tool either. So you don't have, you have that, you have that draft.
I populated my tool, and I gave my evidence, that's what I did.
Okay, so this tool was the one, the one that I sent you, maybe also to the boys who were on, that was approved, I believe it was the January 12th, 2015, board meeting. I'm going to move this to committee, and then committee will come back and report out, hopefully, by next regular board meeting.
I don't know, I, because I know you came to, I know you weren't on the committee, but you came to the committee meeting, which was held first time. So if anyone really has any questions, concerns, or concerns, please be on the committee, because then, I mean, I'll put myself back in the committee too, and I'll take notes and I'll do this, but we can get this done. Because we are talking about a tool, and when you reduce the evaluation part process to just that, you start getting into some, that I was across, that he wasn't across, and that I was. So information, all questions, concerns are not now, it is a matter of populating tool, that's going to be different, I understand we are populated, but if we need to get this in front of the floor, so we approve, and material change, and then make them up, so that superintendent Duster is not pushed back doing this evaluation, I will pay up to you, do whatever I need to do to get that done. So we're not stung, we're going to do whatever we need to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Serrano. Okay, with that, we have next on our agenda, coming to order, we have presentations by Mr. Simmons. And by Mrs. Oden, board, Mrs. Oden, we're not able to make it tonight, so we will try to reschedule hers for next board meeting, if that is feasible with our agenda set.
Andrew, sure, who's next that we have? Which chapter? You got six and seven? All right, so we have Ms. Oden, Ms. Serrano.
Okay.
Better next.
Sounds good. Ms. Oden, are you still with us?
Chapter five is roles and responsibilities, it lays out the different roles on the board and their main responsibilities, it's pretty straightforward, it's actually very helpful for those of us who have had the pleasure of serving on the board for a number of years, this is a nice refresher or review. For those of us who are newer on the board, I think it's pretty enlightening. First is, goes through the president, and that has the most meat to it. I'm going to hit the highlights here and not read each of these bullet points. I did have this formed as a PowerPoint presentation with lots of fireworks and stuff, but what you see here is just a PDF, that I think is probably best served in the interest of time. The most visible role and responsibility of president is to preside over the meeting. The president sets the tone and the climate, fair, reasonable, and impartial treatment, must remain calm and keep the meeting under control at all times. Effectiveness is driven by a number of aspects. First and foremost, prior to each meeting, the president should be conferring with the superintendent to build the agenda, ID potential trouble spots and review items, indeed, a further retention. During the meeting, private conversations and digressions aren't to be discouraged. The president should be strictly following board policy, and the president must do adequate homework and be well informed about each agenda item. Next slide, in the selecting of a president, which is something a board does in the last number two years. They operate differently, for some, it's more senior members, others rotate, but the determining factor should be the quality of leadership that the president brings to the role. President should have knowledge and skills in order to do the job well. President should be an adept communicator, especially as it concerns media, should have uncommon knowledge of parliamentary procedure, and must be a leader. If the president is ineffectual, the board will soon be viewed similarly. Next, a role is the vice president, which is pretty simple and straightforward. Performs duties of president in the event of vacancy or unavailability, and should learn, we have the same skill set. The secretary is next, this is kind of interesting, it may be a member of the board, or it could be somebody else, and they are, they are eligible to receive compensation, although we've never operated in that manner. More than seventy-five percent choose a member to act as secretary, and that's what we've always done, at least. Keeping minutes and keeping records of board official act, and often, as is the case with us, a clerical employee is designated to carry out many of these duties, and that's what Ms. Perino helps us out with so graciously. The next slide, has to do now with general board members, major responsibilities to be prepared. Questions should be submitted to the superintendent or president prior to the meeting, such that there are no surprises at the board meeting. Board should devote most of its time to major issues and policy discussion. The board members should appropriately trust the judgment of the superintendent or other staff expert who may be presenting material. And a main thing is to know and follow board policies in terms of what the responsibilities that board members have. In terms of the superintendent on the following slide, some of this might be a little hard to read, there was a lot of information, I wanted to make sure I summarized it all. As mentioned before, the superintendent should be meeting with the president before the board meeting to help establish the agenda. Should also be meeting with top administrators to get their input and feedback. The, during the meeting, the superintendent's chief role is to coordinate the preparation of the agenda, but importantly, to carry out decisions. is to coordinate the preparation of the agenda, but importantly, to carry out decisions that are made at the meeting. I found this next bullet to be incredibly insightful, if the superintendent is to be held accountable, board communications with staff must be through the superintendent, we need to use the superintendent as our conduit to communicating with staff if and when that is necessary. The, then we monitor the performance of the superintendent. The board is governed by the superintendent, he is the manager, the board must place a good deal of trust in the superintendent, and then the board must resolve certain questions with regards to the superintendent, is it making the correct decisions, or is it being bogged down with constraining decisions, is there mutual trust and respect, what kinds of problems end up coming to the board, is the appropriate chain of command being followed. And finally, touches briefly on the board attorney's role, most boards don't need an attorney attendance at all meetings, and that is the case with us, on occasion, we do have attorneys present when we know there will be legal issues discussed, either in an open or a closed session, and matters that do need legal study, we can always refer to counsel if he or she is not present at the meeting. So, really, the chapters all allow, one of the roles in the board and associated with managing the school district, responsibilities that each one of those roles has. Other, nice chapter you can read, I'm happy to somewhere, because I'm working on the FANS, I'm asking questions we have. I'm sorry, I need to see fireworks.
That's right, Mr. Simmons. You know what, if you sent out your PDF to the whole board, I'm sure everybody would really appreciate it. That's not more than a... Thank you very much. Next.
I don't know that, appropriately, forgive me for my, my word, it's just two things I wanted to bring up as a potential item.
Sure.
The first is, the next pick of board meeting, which is February 8, although the board meeting was scheduled, well, in advance, we're just now following, a lot of the orientation days, the orientation date on high school is also on February 8, and I just asked, and I don't know how to public this, maybe nothing we can do about it, but I know both, Michelle and I have juniors, of which we both missed the concerts for two years, well, I missed a concert for two years, she missed it now, and one, on several items, which I know is part of our responsibility, but this is a big deal, and I know that we have some things we should vote on for February 8, so if there's just a majority without us, okay, or if there's a possibility of, do it Tuesday or so, I don't know what time to do that appropriately, but I think that's quite important.
I don't have any problem with moving until Tuesday, how does everyone else feel about that, do you assume that?
I don't know, that can be, I mean, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm presenting something, and if there's issues at all, I'm hoping to get it, but it's something, like, make sure it's transparent, and not at all, but... So, I mean, you could have a majority without us, so...
Is that something that we could...
We have a special board meeting.
We have a special board meeting, I mean, with about five minutes, if that's something...
I mean, this is a big one, you have to get the majority, so you can, yeah, it's fine, I just want to make sure that you can do that.
I'm making a motion to end, I'm making a motion to adjourn our committee to a whole meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Do I have a second? You second, okay.
Here between meetings, I have a softer question procedurally, I believe it would be legally correct to leave the eighth on the calendar, the only people, and then, the only thing on that agenda would be make a motion to hold a meeting the next day, make sure that meeting is published, it's agenda 48 hours in advance, and we could accommodate your board members' request to move to the next day. Can't do it today, because it's not an agenda item, which is 48 hours, but probably we can do it by changing the agenda of the eighth meeting to just moving meeting. Thank you.
We'll now begin the special meeting of the board of education for Monday, January 25, 2016, could we have a roll call, Mrs. Perino?
Simmons?
Here.
And we said Odom is not with us?
No, she actually sent me a message that her phone had died, and so we can't get on.
Okay, Harrell?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Forrest?
Here.
Perez?
Here, and Forrest is present. First on our agenda, we have approval of non-renewal agreement with STA positive connections. I will call for a motion to approve the non-renewal agreement with STA positive connections as presented. Mrs. Harrell's first, and Mrs. Oden's second. Can we have roll call, Mrs. Perino?
Okay, Harrell?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have approval of, we have approval to seek bids for public transportation services, I call for a motion to approve to seek bids for public, I'm sorry, for pupil transportation services. Mrs. Harrell is first.
Second.
Mrs. Forrest is second. Can we roll call Mrs. Perino?
Forrest?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion has passed. I will call for a motion to end the special meeting of board education. Harrell is first, Forrest is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Guys have it, special meeting is...